6:00 PM, we will go ahead and get started. The Monday, December 20th, 2021 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Bonzal?
I would move that we approve the agenda with the, with one change, that we move item 3F, the National Opioid Settlement, from the consent agenda onto new business as item number four, and renumber items four and five appropriately.
Instead of item six, I'm just trying to keep track here.
Yep. So, item number, what is currently item number four, Climate Action Resolution, would become number five. What is currently item five, Local Development Agreement, would become item six.
Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Bonzal, do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner, or Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
I think this is a critically important national issue, but also a local issue that's affecting us, and I think it's important that, you know, we're publicly discussing and that this issue and giving it the attention and the time it deserves during our new business agenda, rather than merely including it in consent.
Any discussion, Pro Tem Mayor? Any other discussion by the commission? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I'll oppose, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Announcements, I have one announcement tonight. We have a change in our glass recycling, so beginning the, well, immediately, actually. Glass recycling will now be a drop-off station. There are two drop-off locations. One is at Waste Management at 910 West Barrega Avenue, and the other is at the Municipal Service Center at 1100 Wright Street. That information is on the City Marquette website and also on our City Marquette Facebook page. We tried real hard to do glass collection for the last year, and our glass was contaminated when it would get to the landfill with other products. So unfortunately, we've had to move to this to ensure that the glass we are recycling is clean and able to be actually recycled. And I think it will hopefully cause a little bit less confusion. Folks can now put out their single-stream recycling, cardboards, plastics, metal cans, all in their recycling bin every week, and then just keep your glass to the side, maybe bin in your garage or in your home, and occasionally drop it off as needed. So that is a new change, starting immediately. All right, that now brings us to our public comment session, the first one of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. If you'd like to make a public comment, please state your name and physical address, and you can go ahead and approach the podium.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I hope you appreciate that I took the holiday spirit into account in addressing you this evening, and I wore my finest mask as well. So this is a dress-up meeting for me. I'm talking public comment tonight. I sent everyone on the commission, and the city manager, and the city attorney, and the city chief financial officer, an email summarizing the Johnson Controls agreement situation, and the fact that I'm requesting that the city initiate an audit process of this agreement starting next year and continuing throughout the lifespan of the agreement. A little bit of history here, the city paid hard cash $42 million to Johnson Controls to do a series of upgrades throughout the infrastructure of the City Marquette. And the promise was made that of that $42 million, the city would make it back in savings on all of the energy that didn't have to be spent, and all of the upgrades, saving time, effort, and money. Well, the last presentation was in 2019, and it was a warm and fuzzy slide presentation. I gave each of you the link to that meeting, with no data to verify anything, just everything was going fine, and the United Nations named Marquette a leader in this, and it was just so warm and fuzzy, you could just feel it in the air. Two years later, I have no idea what they're going to talk about tonight, but based on what I've seen, it's going to be another warm and fuzzy discussion point. However, the warm and fuzzy part has to be challenged by an audit, a financial audit, of these energy savings, because they now have had enough time and grade to run their programs, put their new systems in place, put their new meters in place, and verify these savings. A column on the left, what the city would have been spending, a column on the right, what the city is spending, and a column that shows that there has been verified savings. And the reason we're not getting it from Johnson Controls is by contractual obligation. If they're not meeting these savings, they have to reimburse the city. So that's why, instead of the city receiving the information from Johnson Controls, it is fiduciary responsibility of the city manager, the city attorney, and the chief financial officer to initiate an audit. And I'm hoping that the audit process that starts next year will continue for this commission and every commission following it, because an investment of $42 million in the city infrastructure is too expensive to just hope that it's going okay. And that's why I sent everything to you, and that's why I'm saying right now that I'm requesting that this board initiate an audit procedure that continues as long as the agreement continues. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Margaret Brum, and I just want to thank you all for your present passing of the climate resolution plan.
And ma'am, if you could please give your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's 1611 Longyear Avenue, Marquette. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. So again, I just want to thank you all for your work on the climate plan resolution. It's the biggest threat, in my opinion, facing mankind right now, and Marquette's a part of that, and Marquette can be a part of the solution, too. We really need to be. So I look forward to seeing your continued leadership on that issue, and what your plan will be, your strategies for meeting the zero carbon emissions in 2050. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Karen Schmidt, and I own a rental duplex at 226 West Hewitt. I want to sincerely thank the commission for voting on a climate resolution tonight. Several months ago, when the commission stated they wanted to construct a resolution and voted on it by the end of the year, I thought, good luck, since you have so many other issues on your plate. But you did exactly what you said you were going to do, and I'm grateful for the dedication, integrity, and capability of everyone that's on this commission. Now's the time for cities to act. Cities have the power to make huge differences in helping their residents prepare for a clean energy future. The last paragraph of the proposed resolution especially resonated with me. It calls upon the city residents and businesses to initiate climate mobilization. A new and better way of doing things will take everyone's participation. I also like how the last paragraph included the ecological crisis and calls to provide protection for all peoples and species of the world. We have a responsibility to protect the Lake Superior watershed, especially now as the amount of building, transportation, and infrastructure increases. I would like to ask the community members present tonight that support this resolution to stand. Thank you for voting on this resolution, and I urge all the commissioners to vote to approve.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, public comment is now closed. We have two presentations this evening. One is from our Local Officers Compensation Commission by Chair Susan Tolson, and if Susan could join us at the side podium. Thank you, Susan. Appreciate you being here tonight, and I know this is an important committee to help determine compensation for some of our boards and committees.
Thank you. Background, our Local Officers Compensation Committee is made up of seven members. We currently have four. We have three vacancies that we're desperate to fill. Purpose and the goals, we, the seven members serve seven-year terms, expiring on August 1st of every year, for the determination of salaries of elected officials for the city commission, the mayor, the Marquette Board of Light and Power, and the Marquette Board of Light and Power Chair. Prior to our meeting every two years, the group staff liaison polls comparable communities and presents the, our group with a spreadsheet outlining the salaries of municipalities and their selected, elected leaders. The Marquette Board of Light and Power staff obtained comparable compensation from other municipally-owned electrical officials in Michigan. This was also shared with our commission. The group met on August 19th of this year and conducted all business necessary. The group recommended the following for elected official salaries for the city commission, the mayor, the board of light and power, and the board of light and power chair. We recommended that the city commission compensation be retained at an annual salary of $7,900. The mayor's compensation retained an annual salary of $11,000. For the board of light and power, the member's salary was increased to $300 a year, with an annual salary now of $4,300. And also, the board of light and power chair, we increased the salary $300, with an annual salary of $4,800. The goals for this upcoming year, by state law, the group can only meet on odd-numbered years, so we meet every two years. The meetings last an average of a half hour. So our overall goal is to have the three current vacancies on the Local Officers Compensation Committee filled. And by the time we meet again, two of the current members will also have been termed out, leaving only two people on the board. So we are desperate to have people step forward. Again, you meet every two years for an average of a half hour, so it's not a big time commitment, but it also gets you involved with the city, you get to know people. It, it's a good way to get your foot in the door if you're interested in serving the city. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you, Susan. I really appreciate the presentation, and I know it's an important role. I think we need to do some work on, on the commission of trying to help drum up some support, but that also is a little awkward for us, because it's our own salary, right? I'm not, I'm not drumming for any kind of increase here, but it's just one of those things where we try to kind of keep an arm's length. But we do need people, and I know we've got a lot of folks in the audience today. If anyone's interested, we'd be glad to have you apply for that. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Susan? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, I mean, Susan, I would just thank you, you know, for all the work that you and your committee do, and for coming to talk to us today. And, you know, I'll go on record as saying I don't think we need a raise, you know, given the budgetary issues we're facing as a city, but, you know, of course, that's not in our hands. And I also want to reiterate what the mayor said. I mean, if you've ever considered joining a committee in the City of Marquette, this is a great way to get involved, because it's extremely low commitment. You meet every couple of years, and, you know, so I think if, you know, taking, say, you know, an hour out of your day, once every two years for the next seven years, we can probably all make that level of commitment. So, great way to get your feet wet, and it's important. And, you know, on a seven-member board, we've got three vacancies. That's, that's troubling. So hopefully, we can get some folks to sign up.
Any other commissioners? All right. Thank you, Susan. We really appreciate you joining us, and thank you for serving on the board. We'll try to get you some more folks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, up next, we have a, we got a little bit of an echo. We have a Johnson Controls update by Ron Stemack with JCI, Johnson Controls. He is joining us virtually, so just give us one moment while we get set up here. And we have a speaker right here that I'm hoping will project so folks in the audience can hear. Hi, Ron, can you hear me?
Looks like it. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. You are quite loud. Try that again.
All right. Is that getting better?
Yeah, that is. Thank you. All right, Ron, go ahead, and you can go ahead and take it away, give us a presentation, and then I will see if the commission has any questions or comments for you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
No, thank you, and I apologize for not being there in person. I've been to the city council meetings in quite some time, and I, and unfortunately, I was with my family this weekend, and my nephew and his family, and he called me this morning and tested positive for COVID. And so, so I was not able to be there, because I didn't want to put anybody else at risk. And so I'm actually in Marquette, or at the beautiful new Fairfield Inn, and so I'll be there. But thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Commissioners and Administration, for having us this evening. It's always a pleasure to come to Marquette. I went to school here at Northern, and I'm from the UP, I live up in Hancock. And so it's, it's always nice to come back to Marquette. I love it here, and how much this, how progressive the city has become. And it's quite impressive. And so today, I want to go through, I was invited back to talk a little bit more about, you know, sustainability, decarbonization, as well as, you know, sort of giving a, the commissioners I haven't met here, that are, that are on, on the, on the council now. But so in that case, I wanted to start off with a couple of slides. I'm going to share, share this presentation here, to talk a little more about, maybe a little bit more about the project, at least give you a quick reader's digest overview of it, of what we did together, and the outcomes of that project. And then more specifically, my counterpart is, who's there in the room with you, George Roush. He is, formerly as a performance assurance specialist, he's, he manages the guarantees, and is your energy consultant. It was Dan Schwab, who had been with us for 35 years. He recently retired. George has been with us for just about 30, and is now the lead energy consultant assigned to the City of Marquette, to manage the energy savings that are being produced by the project, and to ensure that accountability, as well as, as well as finding new opportunities for the city to continue down that path of sustainability and decarbonization. And so on that note, I'll walk through this, and if you want to pause me to ask any questions, that's great. George will be here to talk more about the emissions side, and the green side around decarbonization. So I'll have George cover those pieces. But I'll get started here and walk through the project with you. So give me one minute. Let me know if you can see my screen.
Looks, yep, it looks like it is loading. Thanks, Ron. Yep, we see it.
Cool. Waiting for it to pop up in presentation mode here. There we go. A little bit bigger. And so, this, this truly was a successful partnership for both of our organizations. And you've received a lot of accolades in the City of Marquette, this project, and I'll talk about those here in a little bit. But this is, this is a project that's known internationally, and that's, that's no kidding. And we'll talk about that here in a minute. But I wanted to start off with, you know, we talked about, I was giving an overview of the project, and wanted to talk a little bit, show you the desired outcomes, that the previous administration and the previous council really intended for this project, and how it aligns with your mission statement of the city. The challenges that you were facing, and a lot of that's been addressed from reactive to a proactive state. A review at a very high level, the project itself, the solution, and some of the improvement measures that were done citywide. George will talk a little bit about the emission reduction and sustainability benefits around decarbonization that this project has started, and the proactive nature that you guys have, and before this became a sort of, you know, streamlined, that you guys really are a leader in this area. A brief overview of the financials of the project, and then the actual end results. And so I'll go through each one of those, and please, if you can pause me, or we can wait till the end to ask questions.
Yeah, thanks, Ron. We'll go ahead and have you present, and then I'll see if the commission has questions after the fact.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Now, what you're seeing on your screen right now is really the city's mission statement, directly impacting the city objectives for employee development and public service in the city, which is, at the end of the day, that's what being a municipality is all about, providing better services and support for your local community. Each one of these things that you see in blue were part of those, were those objectives, and the green is how this project was going to impact those. Plan for our future while preserving our past. This is a completely self-funded project from the guaranteed outcomes of the project, where it didn't have, it didn't have to go back to taxpayers for any more money to get this project complete. And it was really, it really was using, you know, upgrading things from the past and really setting you up for the future, becoming more proactive. Changing with the challenges, when this thing first was signed, new legislation came into play that allowed for a new financial mechanism, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment, which the city took advantage of, and there's several benefits the city of doing so. Providing a safe and healthy environment, becoming a smart city by addressing infrastructure while maintaining budget integrity. You guys were really in a reactionary mode. There was a lot of deferred capital and issues out there in, throughout your infrastructure in the city, and we'll show you sort of what the impact was of that. Creating a sense of community, yeah, I mean, this is really about reliability of city services, being able to make sure that you can provide the services that you're entitled to provide to your community. And also, you know, a significant portion of this project was invested in local subcontractors executing the work, trying to keep as much of the money local as we could, with the expertise that's available in Marquette, and driving a lot of those, a lot of those programs to increase economic development in the city. Recognize the accomplishments of employees and community members. It's really, you know, there's a lot of public relations around this, both locally, nationally, and internationally. And, and Marquette is really sort of a stamp of excellence when it comes to these type of programs. Providing opportunities for personal growth, you know, I mean, provided, as part of, it wasn't just installing a bunch of stuff in your buildings, it was really providing training programs for your existing staff to help them operate and maintain the equipment that they have without relying on outside contractors. And that local job creation was a pretty big piece, which I'll outline in a moment. Last but not least, really continuing the leadership for the community and leadership in the state of Michigan, that City Marquette has established for decades. And this is really around sustainability and decarbonization, and each and every one of you, and including just community members, are very proud of the results of this project, and really making, making Marquette an example of a green environment, and really what municipalities can do to continue to provide sustainability for our, for our mother earth. And so you guys really are a role model for that. These are the challenges that you faced. You had very much an aging infrastructure, high energy costs, especially on the electric side, insufficient capital funds, things just continuing to get deferred. You had a capital improvements plan that you were, you know, that you, private strategic plan that you put together a few years, and a lot of the stuff just kept rolling over because of other needs that came up in the city. It wasn't about, you know, poor management or poor decision-making, it's just if you have to spend one thing or another, you know, I mean, providing the services in the, in the community were always number one for the city. And so it caused a lot of deferred things because of lack of capital. This is the big one around the new legislation that was passed for financing, that the city does not want to negatively impact its bonding capacity by funding a program with traditional bonds or an installment purchase agreement. And that, that new TLP legislation, tactic temp lease purchase legislation that was passed, does not, let me pre, does not, has, has zero impact on your bonding capacity statutorily. And so, so all of this program, the 28 million dollars worth of stuff that was done in your buildings, not only was budget neutral, it didn't have, have to come back to taxpayers more money to do it, it was also, it did not, that borrowing of a lease did not impact your bonding capacity for future needs of the city. So it didn't handcuff you. That was a really, really big win at the time, and continues to be so moving forward. Significant operational risks, there was equipment failure, and then some pretty sensitive areas at the wastewater treatment facilities, that were really either at the end of their useful life or nearing it, that was putting the city at risk of, of operational failure in several areas. Ice Arena at the Lake Year Arena is another one. Desire to reduce energy and continuous improvement, you guys were really in a reactionary point, and those challenges were met by this project, and that was the intent of it. Looking at, you know, what was the project? It was, you know, a lot, a lot of people might be familiar with the term, some people may not be. It was really utilizing the performance contracting legislation in the state of Michigan. What is that? It really becomes a partnership between an energy services company, us, in the situation from the public RFP that was put out. We were selected to partner with the City of Marquette to identify energy and cost-saving streams throughout your infrastructure, implement, if, if, if business fundamentally feasible, a comprehensive efficiency project. And the big thing around performance contracting legislation that, that protects the city and really transfers the risk from the city to us, is, is the three guarantees of performance contracting. The savings are guaranteed, that if there's a shortfall in the savings in any year, that, that we have to write you a check for the difference. So it really protects that, that savings stream that is necessary to pay for that long-term lease. The cost for the installation were guaranteed, meaning that if we made a mistake in design and engineering during development of the project, or it cost us more to install things because of like in today's economy, how construction costs are just going absolutely crazy in that industry, we were, we were held accountable and had to, had to keep it within the existing cost of the project without sacrificing performance. And that's the last one. That's the checks and balances, the guaranteed performance. If something doesn't function the way it's supposed to, you know, then we have to come back and fix it at no cost to the city. And so that's a big one, because of the fact that, you know, we can't just come in and turn things off because the savings aren't being reached. That doesn't exactly, that's not a practical approach, obviously, and some people in our industry have done that in the past. So that, that's a big component. It was a full-turnkey project, where it included all the engineering underneath our umbrella. The city, at the end of the day, had one contract, and that was us, and we were accountable for the whole project. We did all the engineering, we did all, we did all the fit packages, and bid out all of the, the installation of the project. We project managed and construction managed it. And then now, now that the construction's complete, we're providing training and service to support the city, with resources that either have to be outsourced or through training programs to make your people more efficient. And last but not least, the project was funded using the new tech temp lease purchase law. It was a 20-year tactic temp lease, and that is the maximum for that specific legislation. And once again, it doesn't have any impact on your bonding capacity as a city. And so the big win was, is that you get a lot of work of implementing capital And so the big win was that you get a lot of work of implementing capital improvement projects in two thousand seventeen and eighteen through the guaranteed energy and operational savings that they create in the future. So all the savings that were paid for this project were generated by doing the improvements themselves. And so that was a big win for the city to not have to go back and ask taxpayers for more money or run into the risk of deferred capital needs shutting something down. Highlights of the scope of work that was done, most of the new traffic signals, intersection signals that you see throughout the city are all smart controlled and were completely part of this project in order to really assist around public safety and security. The ice making equipment for both sheets of ice at Lakeview along with the fire alarm system and lighting upgrades and controls upgrades were all updated to make, because that equipment was running near its end of its life and it was used and wasn't able to continue to make ice at the level that would be necessary for competitive play. Citywide, there's security and IT upgrades everywhere in the city, cameras and to protect the community and that really help manage any type of vandalism or, you know, illegal, you know, activities by others. IT upgrades really set you up for the future with cloud-based systems, being able to maybe really keep you in the twenty-first street with those type of upgrades. A whole new energy management system was installed throughout the city so that Eric Salmon, your facilities director and his staff can effectively manage things without having to necessarily go out and see if it's not working. Everything's computerized and interconnected, so he can do a great job of managing the infrastructure, making sure that emergency situations are dealt with immediately, you know, through that system. And you can see the pictures of the various things that were completed. Installed over sixty-three hundred new water meters in the city with new automatic meter infrastructure reading capabilities that really helped, that really gives you as a community instant access to your information on your water usage. It helps the city assist and better service their customers, that if there's a leak or something that doesn't seem right, through billing and through watching that through the automatic system, that they can address it immediately where it doesn't run in and cost, you know, a potential resident months and months and months of backwater bills because of a leak that they didn't see. Implementing at the wastewater treatment plant, there was a bunch of upgrades there and this is just, the main one was the cogeneration plant that was built, that really converted methane that was being flared off, probably saw that when you drove by it back in the day where there was a flame coming from inside the plant, they were burning the methane. We turned around and took that methane and used it to produce electricity and you could see the generators on your right here in the picture. And it was really an excellent program to really make the plant net zero in regards to electrical use on, at the plant. And so it completely is self-sufficient generating its own electricity. We did all kinds of pump and lift station mechanical system improvements on both the wastewater as well as the water treatment side to make the management of water throughout the city and identifying lost water was a huge benefit financially as well as functionally on those systems because they were dated. And then also on the wastewater water treatment side, the energy management system was implemented as well. We did citywide LED street lighting throughout the whole city. We, the city hall that you're sitting in right now, all of the remodeling was done as part of the project, completely self-funded from the savings that were generated in other areas. We're able to upgrade and provide better access to services at city hall, you know, through the project, they found a way to fund it. Variable speed drives are just our energy efficient improvement measures on pumps that help you to control flow through those pumps where if you don't need to have full access to the flow, to service or heat the building for instance, you know, I mean, and we can curb that back and slow down the speed of reducing the amount of water flowing through, it helps save energy for the city. Weatherproofing, all kinds of different things on that, we did some roofing projects, we did, we put in new windows in certain buildings, we did traditional weatherproofing like door sweeps, side doors, sealing windows and sealing gaps and allowing for more efficient buildings to let the systems work the way they're supposed to, to keep buildings tempered. We replaced our existing heating systems at multiple buildings with new boilers, pumps and controls. The park and trail lighting and the lighting control in those areas, those were all upgraded to LED and now we can control the lighting in those parks to have dark sky events in the summertime and without having physical human beings have to manage those type of things. And then last but certainly least, we're supporting the city moving forward with citywide service agreement to help support city operational staff for the life of the program with the guaranteed savings as well as operational support on mechanical and control systems and security systems throughout the city. On that note, I mean, George Roush, George, I'll let you introduce yourself real quick and your background, but I'm handing it over to George and George is going to walk through some of the benefits that were achieved through the program on emission reduction and decarbonization. So George, I'll hand it over to you, bud.
Hello everyone, my name is George Roush, been with Johnson Controls, like Ron said, almost thirty years. And a lot of my background is with public institutions, mainly universities, cities, public schools, so I have some commercial experience, but I have a lot of experience with different environments and I like to bring that experience to the customer whenever I can. What we have in front of us today is the emission reductions and the timeline from when the project was first being thought of, which is called our baseline year. And you can see we're up around just above eight thousand metric CO2 tons. And then during the installation period, the period from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, we phased in a lot of the improvements, I just lumped them all together and then annualized the number to show that there was roughly a twelve percent annual reduction. It would have been more towards the end of that three-year period, obviously because things were being phased in, but to make the graph simpler, I just did it as one line item. With that, our first year of the performance guarantee, we were at thirty-six percent. It's a very sizable reduction. And then also in year two, we saw an additional, and it doesn't show on the graph, but it's like a half a percent we got better with. So, we also put in there, we weren't sure what your goal is going to be, but we see a lot of places set fifty percent reduction as their goal, so if you were to take that into account, you're within fourteen percent after the last bit of work that you've done. So that can...
I think that'll be sort of an outcome of, you know, this, working with Karen and her staff going into January and so forth, you know, with the commission on identifying what that goal needs to look like and what can be done there, because there's a lot more to it than just energy efficiency, it's also the materials that you use in streets and roads and there's so many different factors that involve how you handle trash and all kinds of factors that come involved with decarbonization. And so there'll be, those goals haven't been established for the city yet, that's sort of placeholder of, for things to come moving forward. And MU is in a very similar situation, you're looking at like almost like a two thousand forty timeline, it hasn't been firmly established yet, but that's some of the things that they've talked about, because we've got a strong relationship with Northern as well. And so, you know, I mean, so establishing that goal is the first starting point to really identifying additional opportunities in the future to reduce energy or potentially generate entry, energy with sustainable programs like wind and solar and geothermal and whatever's most applicable for Marquette. George?
Ron's doing some of my thunder, you can go to the next page, please.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
That's all right, Ron. The next thing we did is we looked at the overall reduction for the entire project from the inception to the end of year two. And the fuel source, basically, we broke it down into electricity and natural gas and you can see electricity, there was about nine point four million units. Natural gas, we had an increase and that was mainly because of, there's times at the, with the bio, help me out here, Ron.
Yeah, with the wastewater treatment plant, yeah.
Yeah, so we have the cogeneration going on there, so when we don't have enough methane, we will then use natural gas to offset that. So then, once we have all of that, we take that and convert it into the different components. We have carbon dioxide and metric tons and then we go into the reductions for nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, mercury, particulate matter, and I can't read the last two because Ron's head's in the way, but volatile.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Sure. So, I'm sorry, but there's, the electricity is presented as a positive figure and natural gas is presented as primarily a negative figure? So, which is, it's not, so you're saying, I don't understand those units, are you saying that the electricity increased and the natural gas decreased or is it the other way around? I'm not following you.
Most of the, there were natural gas savings with some of the improvements that were done, but they were offset by the additional gas usage required when we don't have enough methane to produce one hundred percent of the power for that building. But the units...
There's a couple of times, there's a couple of times in the summer at the plant where natural gas is utilized to be able to keep the turbines, keep generators running because there's a much larger benefit to the city to have those turbines running than to come back to a traditional process. And so that required just a little bit of natural gas, so that's to answer your question, electricity is the reduction and natural gas was an increase because of the wastewater treatment plant. It would have been higher if we didn't do some natural gas improvements like on boilers and buildings and that type of stuff, where it saved natural gas, so that number was larger, but we minimized as much as we could there, but that's what that negative seventy-eight, seventy-eight sixty-eight is, is some additional supplemental natural gas out of the plant, at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, just one more clarifying question, so we're buying the natural gas and we're running it at the plant, not the BLP, this isn't the BLP buying their natural gas to run their turbines?
Correct.
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 Thank you.
The last two columns, after I move Ron there, is the volatile organic compounds and then carbon monoxide. Ron, let's see. So when you go to take that and you convert it into the improvements and reductions of what they could possibly mean in the environment and to each one of us, we have different equivalent factors here, so if you were to take all that CO2 reduction and you'd be able to grow seedlings of one hundred ninety-one thousand six sixty-two. So this is what this is depicting. It's also the equivalent of taking, you know, a thousand three hundred and sixty-nine cars off the road and so forth down the line here, but it's to give you an idea of the impact outside of just the numbers of CO2, so.
The original numbers that were presented to the board a couple of years ago, at an appointment, the project first started, were projections because we hadn't, because installation was just getting completed, we weren't getting the whole benefits yet for the city, but the benefits actually dramatically were higher on the emissions reduction over the first two years following construction, those are what George calls the performance years. Performance is, year one of performance is the first year following the substantial completion of all the projects that were installed, all right? And that's how that works, let's explain that maybe a little bit further, what you saw in the previous couple of slides. And so, these are much greater numbers than the projections said during development that the city received due to your efforts. And so this is really good news.
Sure, thank you. So the table is the same information as the bar graphs with the vertical bar graph?
The vertical bar graph is only for the metric tons of CO2, this is showing you how that would equate into the other factors.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, Ron, I think it's back to you.
And so, you know, we'll open up any other questions that you might have moving forward, but just a brief overview on the business case, the performance contracting program for the city of Marquette is completely self-funded from savings, CIP contribution and rebates, and those were all administratively handled by us on behalf of the city in order to get those savings, so there wasn't any administrative burdens on your staff. Final analysis, savings for the city, we are ahead of projections right now, but the projection at the beginning of, beginning of the performance period was forty-two, over forty-two million dollars over the next twenty years. And after the first two years of the guarantee period, we are exceeding those projections, so that's really good news on behalf of the city in order to meet the obligations of doing the improvements themselves. The final analysis indicated that the savings and contribution is paying for in the final project was twenty-eight million sixty-five thousand of improvements in services. And those projects were executed over two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and then the first performance year started right at the end of two thousand nineteen. And then the program is generating in addition to meeting the obligation of the lease for twenty-eight million, it's generating approximately an additional four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of positive cash flow to the Children's City's General Fund and Water Market Funds over the next twenty years. So not only is the project paying for all the improvements to existing budgets, it's also generating a positive cash flow over and above the improvements. In closing, it's also the program, and I believe you guys got a copy of this in your board pack on Friday, so we have this information, so if you have any questions, you can always ask us now or if you have something later that comes up, please reach out. But the self-funded solutions, it was completely paid from savings. The guaranteed outcomes are forty-two million dollars, like we just stated. It reduced significantly the risk through guarantees on fixed cost of performance for the city. We did have some cost overruns in the project, but those were completely covered by Johnson Controls, there was not, there was not a single change order for existing scope that was asked for in the project, nor could we because of contractual obligations. We have been the single point of accountability and will continue to be that for the city as long as we are meeting your expectations for what the intent of the project is and making sure that we're satisfying and continuing to be your partner in the long term. The final project was completely financed through the new tactical debt lease purchase legislation, you were the second city in the state of Michigan to do it because it was only passed three, four years ago now. First one was St. Clair Shores down in Detroit area and you were the second in the state to use this tool and has been multiple since. Operational integrity, you know, replaced aging equipment prior to major failure and provided preventive and proactive services to continue to assist Eric in the operational functionality of the city. Defining the local impact, seventy percent of the project was executed by local companies in the city of Marquette and surrounding areas of Marquette. This project included over seventy-eight thousand hours of local labor at prevailing wages, equating to thirty-seven full-time jobs over the two-year construction period of seventeen to eighteen. And one of the most significant things for the city is, and this is what we talked about when I first kicked it off, was, is the recognition you've received. You were recognized, but last first, by the United Nations as a best practice for implementing smart city technology and intelligent lighting, water meter reading technology and advanced building automation and your focus on sustainability. And that was, the Johnson Controls team was there and you were the lone municipal representative internationally for the success of your project. And just recently, literally within the last sixty days, you were recognized by the Michigan Energy Services Coalition and that was really about for your commitment to energy reduction and energy performance contracting in the state of Michigan. You were nominated and you were the only city to receive that recognition this year by that group and George brought your plaque with him, I wish I could be there to present it, but, you know, Karen, I don't know if he gave it to you already or not, but you got your plaque as a recognition for that and there'll also be some marketing and public relations that'll come out of that as well to continue to support the vision and mission of your city, the impact that you're having economically and through energy and sustainability and really continuing that leadership role that you've established over the last several years. So on behalf of Johnson Controls, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity of working with the city of Marquette, it has been a pleasure and continues to be and we continue to look forward to assisting you in the future on your future goals around decarbonization and sustainability and working together to make those things happen.
Well, thank you, Ron, I really appreciate the presentation and I guess it's really refreshing to kind of hear of all the work that we have been doing long before I was even on the commission, see what that progress looks like and continue that into the future. We have actually, later on our agenda, I don't know if you noticed, Ron, but we've got a climate resolution that we're going to be considering, so we may have an answer for you sooner than later and what we're hoping to do with emissions, but that hasn't been decided just yet. So, you know, one, what'd you say, Ron, sorry?
No, that is awesome, I know Karen gave me a little snippet of it... I know Karen gave me a little snippet of information about that earlier, late last week, but that just shows you guys' commitment, you and Northern Michigan University and your guys' leadership. And actually, we're working with the brand-new hospital, LifePoint, because there's some energy efficiency opportunities even in that brand-new hospital based off of what the design was. And so your commitment to energy conservation, that just, that just says where you guys are going and how serious you take it. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
If it passes.
Appreciate it. I know the commission probably has some questions. Do we want to do the plaque? Or do you want to do that later?
We can fill questions first if you'd like.
Okay, we'll do questions first. You know, before I kick it after the rest of the commission, the biggest question I have, and I'm not sure which of you can answer this better, and I'm actually thinking this might need to be a follow-up email to the commission, but I'd really like to see more detailed financial information about the savings for the City of Marquette. This paints, you know, a beautiful picture, and it's, it's a great story to tell, but I really like to see the raw data and kind of like that chart that we see on page nine with the emission reduction. I want to see those cost savings.
Okay.
Yeah, we're glad to do that. We went, we went through that just recently on both the, on the energy side and the general fund buildings, as well as the water meter savings and, and those type of things on, on those reductions there as well, as well as the plant. So you've received that data recently, but we'd love to sit down with you. And I'm, I can't see or tell who's talking. Mayor, is that you?
Yes, it's me. It's Mayor Smith.
Yeah, we would love to do that. We've got the data to support everything, and that's been given to Karen and-
And my apologies if I, if it's in my inbox and I, you know, maybe glanced at it and didn't give it the full review. So that could be the, the problem as well, but I would, I would love to see that again if possible. That was really the main question I have, and just appreciate you and your team, all the work you have done and continue to do. I'll turn it over to the commission. I'm guessing a lot, quite a few commissioners might want to speak on this, so I'll start things off with Commissioner Stonehouse if he has anything, and then we'll go down the line alphabetically here.
Well, Your Honor, thank you. The only question I think I really would have, or the only item, would be to support your request for additional data and to be able to drill it down by category, however it, which, however it is broken down, but to be able to compare before, after, and what we're presently doing, so we understand where the numbers come from, and it can serve as a partial validation of, of how well the project is working. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I would appreciate a point of clarification about this cogeneration facility. The, you know, there was some comments about, you know, sometimes we don't have enough methane, so we need to burn natural gas. So are we producing more carbon emissions than we were using before? Can you just explain that again?
Sure. So if we're burning natural gas, think of it this way. You're not having to send electricity from the power plant all the way over to that facility. So you've got all the, the gains from that. So you're, you're producing power more efficiently and more cleaner than what the power company can do, because it doesn't have to transmit it there, and it doesn't, we don't have to bring in coal or anything to burn. We're just using natural gas. And that goes through those generators, obviously.
Okay, thank you. That makes a little more sense. The, I agree that I would like to see that, that data on cost savings broken down in a detailed way. And I, I do think it might make sense for us to do some kind of internal or, you know, independent review of that as well, because we are talking about a large amount of money. Our, so our wastewater treatment plant, there's a statement in the presentation that we're at net zero for electricity consumption. Can you explain that a little more? Because that was news to me.
When, when the facility's not using natural gas, you're at net zero, because you're using the methane to produce all your power. So there is times during the year where you're not at that point, you have to use the natural gas. And we're investigating the place-
There's a couple of different things. There's high usage for electricity in, in a couple, a couple of times during the summer that, that would require that to happen for natural gas. And then there is certain maintenance requirements that are done on the generator equipment. So when that shuts down, yeah, I mean, then there's, there is some need for natural gas in that situation as well. And so some of that is, is a repercussion just of, of the type of equipment that was used at the time. But the financial and functional benefits, both emissions-wise as well as, as financial, were, were significant.
Okay, thank you. This is perhaps more of a question for city staff, but have we ever considered doing any kind of independent audit of the benefits that we've seen from the JCI project? And regardless of whether we have or not, like, do we have any idea of what that might look like, or if that would be feasible? It seems like it might make sense to look back and review after five years and see, you know, for ourselves. I think this is maybe one of those situations where we want to trust but verify, you know?
We can, we can certainly explore those options, but with the data that is provided, we are looking that over and have several staff members looking at that at this time. We are entering, as they had mentioned, a different phase of this project. We have exited the implementation, initial implementation phase and are now heading into that first hands-off approach, you know, year where things are kind of going as they're intended and, and tweaking only, only minor issues. So at this point, we are, we have the data to review, and we can further exploring other options that the commission would, would like us to, but-
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. That's all the questions that I had for now.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. Your, your first slide talks about a successful partnership, and I want to make sure that we have that for the 20 years of this commitment. You know, your, your company has a, a strong, positive reputation here in our community and also known nationally and internationally. And I, I guess I'm the fourth commissioner to say that I was a little disappointed to not see more specifics on the measurements, the performance measurements and the metrics for that. And so I, I too will ask for that. I just want that, to provide that reassurance that we're on the right track and that we know that we're on the right track. And, you know, then we will know that we have that promised savings, and it will also represent if there are opportunities where we need to improve that we could do that. So again, I will join them in asking to verify those savings. You know, and the acolytes you have for, that you listed for this project are really wonderful. I think that our community hears a lot about joint Johnson Controls, but they also do not know the benefits that are, have been given to the citizens of this community. So as much of the public relations as, you know, your company is doing nationally and internationally, I would like to see a little bit of that public relations here in our community, so that those people out there in our audience and are listening to us can also know the benefits that this 20-year project is bringing to us. Thank you.
It's a great suggestion.
Sorry. Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I have a, I first want to go with exactly what all the other commissioners have said and say I would definitely like more information about the actual data of the numbers. But I want to dig a little deeper. I see that you guys have said that our installation of all the water meters are complete, and I know the email we got that said 33, this presentation said 6,300. Am I wrong in saying there's more households than that in Marquette? Like for water meters in all the different places?
So, so the water meters, let's-
There's a little bit of echo. Would you mind repeating that question? I'm sorry.
The, the water meters?
Yes, it said that-
On our presentation said 3,300, on your slide said 6,300?
It was a mistake. That, that was a mistake. That was my mistake. That was a typo on my behalf. It's 6,300.
Okay. And then the question was, are, and I'm just a little closer to the speaker, which is why I'm helping Commissioner Hanley out. Sorry, Commissioner Hanley. 6,300 units, we have more households than that in Marquette. So we were just wondering what the difference is there? At least I think we do.
There was, there was some that, that could tie into AMI system that were more, that we didn't replace things just to replace things. And so some meters did not need to be replaced. Majority of them did because of age and, and inefficiency of those meters on the, on accounting for all the water that was being used at various residencies and commercial businesses throughout the city. And so that's why there's a difference there between the number of households and the number of meters.
Okay, and a little bit more about those meters. Who owns the equipment that you guys put in?
You guys do.
Okay, and what's the lifespan of those meters?
It varies, but it's anywhere from 25 to 30 years. And some of that degradation of meters, that happens over time to all mechanical things, that, that, that is built into the financial model to take that into consideration. Because accuracy, in essence, over time, meters get less accurate, meaning that the water that's going through is not being measured to everything that, that specific entity is using on their end. And so you guys were like, like below 90% efficient, accuracy below 90%. Now it's just under 100. And so that accuracy accounted for lost revenue, because anytime you have, or you have lost revenue. And so that accuracy helped pay for a lot of the pressure on that side of it.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, oh, that makes complete sense. Now, another question, are we actually fully automated, or are we still paying someone to read some meters at this point?
You are fully aut, I think there's a, I'm trying, now, I wish I, I think there's a couple of areas that we couldn't connect to technology-wise, that there's still some meter readers, but very, very little. Almost all of it is completely automated. I'd have to go back and, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, maybe it's up towards Market Mountain. Just the geographical landscape wouldn't allow us to connect through the network that supports the overall AMI system. And I believe that we're still doing that. Maybe Eric, could you, Steeman, could you answer that? I can't remember exactly if they're still using them or not.
Yeah, I think we're at about 99% for the read on our AMI. We do have some people that still have to go out and get them, and that's mainly because of geographical location, because we had to put a bunch of CGR towers around town, and it just, financially, it wasn't feasible to place. We would have needed another five or six of them just to gather a few more people. But the contractual obligation, I think, was like 98%, and we hit around 99.
Okay, and then a question for you that you can probably answer. Have we had any failure of the new equipment so far?
There's been a couple endpoint issues, but the meters have been rock solid. We went with an Itron meter. So there's two different types of meter we use. The Itrons, which are basically in the homes. Those are all ultrasonic meters, no moving parts, all electronic. Those have been very good. We've had a few issues with the endpoints, which are what actually talk to the cloud to send the information on. But those were all warranted through the manufacturer. And then the, the mechanicals, those have been very good. And then as part of the M and V, we do do some testing to verify that they are reading what they should be. So we just did that this year as part of the M and V contract, and everything was reading just as it should be.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Eric. That's my questions when it comes to those. The other question that I had was, oh, where did I write it down? Sorry. The, the net zero question that Evan dealt into. So what you're saying is we're net zero unless we're not net zero, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, you're net zero-
So can we really call it then, that then, if we're not actually net zero all the time? I feel like it's a big claim to make when it's not true.
Yeah, I guess technically that would be true, I guess, yes. I guess I won't, I won't say. One or two instances during the summertime where that happens, but that, that would be true.
Thank you. All right, I'm good.
Pro temp, Mayor?
I would just echo the fact that I would also like to see more of the raw data and the numbers to see what this looks like financially. And, here, just a second. And I think if we could review that internally, which it sounds like we are, that would probably be the, the best road to go with in the short term, as long as there isn't any discrepancies. I don't see any issue with that. If there is, then maybe we do need to bring a third party in, but for the sake of saving money, I don't think that's the first step we should go with. I'm really impressed with some of the questions that have already been asked. I guess I'm just going to ask one before I pass this off here. Is there, has there been any sufficient, like, significant failings in any of the new facilities, programs, anything like that, that have caused setbacks?
I'm not aware of any, Eric. I don't know. Ron, do you know of any?
No, I don't. Eric, Eric, you'd get a great one to answer that, because you have to live with it every day, because I'm not, during the project management phase a whole lot. And Tim, Tim Conster, who is the lead operations manager, couldn't be here tonight. He's on vacation for the holidays. But there is nothing major, and if there's, if there's been any hiccups, we cover those as part of the performance guarantee. Yeah, I mean, like, like Eric was mentioning, there's a couple of things on the water meter side. That was a great question, you know, and those were dealt with immediately. We were held accountable, and there was no additional cost to the city to do that. And so that just comes along with the performance side of our contractual obligation. And so, but other than that, there really hasn't been any significant failures, not that I can think of.
Yeah, I would echo that. You know, there was some growing pains getting things dialed in, but once we did, we did have a couple of very minor mechanical issues, but those were all taken care of through warranty. So everything's been running very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Save the best for last. All right. So I have seen the documents that were shared in previous years, because I worked with an NMU student who had a project out at the wastewater treatment plant. So there are documents dated November 19 and November 20, which I have shared with the rest of the commission, and I shared with the city manager earlier this week. And I'm sure you've seen them, Eric. They're, they're called MV report, and they have-
Yeah.
-all the detail. So it would, and I think what you've heard from us is we would expect that that be presented with us, not just a PowerPoint. So please, and then understanding that this is a, is quite a bit of data, it's 34 pages, but it is what I think we've been asking for. So just being clear, I think, to staff and to JCI, that this level of information would be helpful, and it was, you know, provided to, and, and, yeah, and so Dan Schwab was the author of the report in 2020, and it was given to-
Yeah.
-department heads. So, so we know this exists, so it's not, and it's just, I think, making it public, even to the point of putting this up on the website, this should be, I think, level, the level of information that people could then learn. I mean, there's, there's a lot in here, but there's a lot that also goes to show what's happening. And so I think it actually really makes your case. And so I really would encourage you all to make this information available. Given that, I want to also let you know, we stopped using coal in 2019 in this community, so you can, coal's not an issue. Thank you, Marquette Board of Light and Power for making that happen. So we are relying on natural gas and hydropower, and we buy off the grid at night many days of the year. So I think it's important to be clear on our baseline for that, when making those comparisons. So, and in particular, there are tools that can help us rank how our city's doing against other communities. There's both EPA has them, and there's an international nonprofit called ICLEI, ICLI, the international, it's an international cities group. And so I'm hoping through this climate process, we can take this valuable data, put it into some commonly available tools that are available on the internet that would allow us to compare how we're doing and give us some metrics, which I think everyone here has been asking for. And as part of your performance contract, could you, I, I hope that we can find, our staff are stretched very thin, would there be opportunities for JCI to participate in supporting us in making those, putting that data into these systems?
All right, you know, I, Job Control deserves to support you on those things, and so, and my team does. And so, you know, we can, what I'd do is I'd probably like to take it offline, and we can talk about, because there's several different tools that are outside, out there, would be from the DOE and EPA, you know, around the climate initiatives and those type of things. And so I want to make sure that, that we're picking the tools that probably make the most sense for Marquette. And so I'm not trying to divert to the question or, or step away from it, it's just there's a lot to that specifically. So I would welcome that conversation offline, you know, and maybe we could talk about that here at the beginning, the beginning of the new year. The one suggestion, before any other comments, is that, you know, we would love to go through that, we would love to go through that data with you. Obviously, there's a lot there, a lot of details to it, which is why the guarantees become so significant. And it's important that you guys do understand that. And so we are, we'd be more than happy to do that. I would suggest, like, when we went through development, we held all kinds of different workshops on different subjects, and had subject matter experts that came in, and we were able to go through that stuff with your team at the time, your administration, and some of your council members on, on taking a look at how the project was developed and making recommendations accordingly off of sound data. I would recommend that same type of environment, that's a very successful way of doing it. It's not about dropping a PowerPoint on your lap. This was intended to be a Reader's Digest version tonight. And so- And so, uh, you know, and, and so I, I, out of that, based off the recommendations, um, I think, you know, what the mayor pro tem, you know, mayor said, you know, I mean, in regards to that, that I think that's a, a really good suggestion, that we go through it, and I, I think once we go through it, we, because they're still a third party, um, all the measurement, M and V is cancer measurement verification, um, just so you're aware if you didn't know that. Um, and all of the M and V methodologies that are used are, are given to energy services companies as a standard throughout the country, um, from the Department of Energy. And so the third-party tools that we utilize so that we're not, it's not the fox guarding, guarding the hen house. And so, um, it'd be part of that educational process if we go through that, it's called the IPMVP Protocol, International Performance and Measurement Measurement Verification Protocol is the acronym. Um, and so, and that's also in the state legislation, has a requirement for guaranteeing savings so that it's not the, it's not that energy services companies doing it direct, um, we have to use third-party tools. And so that'll be part of that discussion, and that would be very valuable for those who want to get into that type of detail and that information, that would support everything we've been talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, uh, this is, um, Commissioner Hill again. So, uh, if I can summarize that, uh, there are standards by which I, if it follows how things are done in energy efficiency, for example, you can say that when you've used a, a piece of equipment, you can say that it uses so many kilowatt-hours per, um, uh, work hour, and so then you can say this is the equivalent savings. That, is that, that's general?
It's really actually more detailed than that. Um, again, is that the actual, we have measured this about every room in every building of the city. We have put run, um, monitoring devices on equipment that moves and motions, mechanical equipment to manage runtimes over months, to get good, solid data so that we're making, um, you know, uh, very, very solid, less subjective and more object in regards to the actual data that goes into these calculations. And so, um, so that's some of the things that we'll need to go through, Commissioner Hill. Yeah, I mean, that, uh, that we could show you that are part of the requirements of those protocols set by the Department of Energy.
Right.
So there's a lot that went into these calculations.
That's, that's great to hear, and, uh, uh, we are, it's, I think, what would be valuable to that is not only understanding those standards, but as I said, putting that information into something like the ICLEI database or the EPA tools that allow our city to then understand how we're improving against our baseline, how we're improving to getting to year 2050, and how we're doing in cities compared to same size. That would be, I think, the ultimate value. And then
Great suggestion.
The, um, the only other question I have is, um, looking them over. Do you think COVID had an impact in reducing our emissions and use in 2020? Is there any way to make that kind of, uh, statement at this time or in comparison to how you've seen other communities with all the reductions that often had happened, people working from home, things like that? Is, is that anything you've seen so far?
Well, obviously, obviously had a direct impact on the, on less vehicles on the road, right? Yeah, I mean, without question, uh, you know, and some of those type of things, but it also increased water usage, it increased, it increased electrical usage at homes, you know what I mean? Um, yeah, and some of that was offset probably by the businesses not being operational, as those businesses weren't running their utilities like they normally do, that accounted for a lot of the emissions. And so I, I don't have overall statistics, that's something we should look into. George, do you have any other comments on that? That's your area of expertise. By the way, George is replacing Dan Schwab we referenced on that report. Dan's the one who retired, and George is now the new Dan Schwab. George, you have any, is that what I just said off of her, off of, uh, Commissioner Hill's questions?
Well, I, I can give you an example from, from another customer on a high level. Milwaukee Public Library, the main library, uh, we run a guarantee on that one too, and we were monitoring how COVID impacted that facility. Being a public facility, um, they often are open because they have, uh, some homeless in the area, so they want to have an area where they can go during the day. So they weren't one-hundred percent shut down, but they did have some faculty and staff that were working from home. So that caused a reduction of approximately twenty percent of their operation. Now, that would be offset, like Ron said, by whatever they would use at home. So it's, that's a hard question to answer.
Yeah, I just, as we're thinking about getting to 2050 and where the reductions are, just, we're gonna always have that asterisk, I think everyone knows in that year 2020 and how we have coped with this situation. And then my last question, um, I, uh, I know there's a study going on right now to consider adding fiber through our municipal utility and having a fiber connection for every, um, every structure in the, in Marquette. And would, any high-level thoughts on how that might help us with maybe some of these AMI, AMI issues or other, uh, pieces of managing the city as we're moving forward?
Uh, well, it can make communication much more effective between the infrastructure, it'd make it a lot faster, a lot more reliable. Um, there's no question about that. Um, it also would prepare your future IQ for additional growth, you know, especially what's happening community-wise in Marquette and, and how you really have become a, you know, um, a national destination, you know what I mean, for tourism and everything else that you guys are continuing to. Everybody thought that Cass Sawyer was gonna make Marquette turn into, uh, you know, a small town in White Pine somewhere, you know what I mean, and it was the exact opposite, it just took a little longer. But, you know, um, I think that's, uh, I think all those type of things are gonna be benefactors in regards to the level of communication, level of, um, information technology available and different resources that utilize that type of technology for communication backbones, you know what I mean? So I think all those things are gonna be huge wins for Marquette to do that, because that's usually a really costly thing to take on.
And Ron, it looked like Eric Steeman had something to add on that as well.
Well, I, I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna add in that, like, our traffic signals, they're already on fiber, most of them, for the most part, they do some wireless parts to them. Um, but yeah, definitely with AMI, I mean, if, if that fiber does go out and reach out like that, we'd be able to pull in more homes, that, that would definitely be a possibility.
Thank you. Thanks for all this, uh, work and look forward to future conversations.
And we'll work with you, Karen, on setting up the workshops, you know what I mean, I think that's probably our next step.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to add that, you know, a lot of what I heard from the commission, at least, was, um, I, I think I'm boiling it down, at least in my head, that we need a little bit more of a shared language around climate change. There are a lot of, um, catchphrases, key phrases, that, you know, the commission may or may not understand all of what they mean and what the impact is beyond just some of the words, the community may not understand. So I think, um, putting things in layman's terms as much as we can would be helpful. Obviously, we need the data to support whatever we're talking about, but that's probably something we need to work on as a city, and obviously JCI is a, a part of that, but we're gonna be looking at climate and a lot of aspects moving forward too. But I just want to make sure that the public is able to understand what we're talking about, because I'll be honest, I go, you know, listening to this presentation, there are parts of it where I'm like, aw, I kinda know what they're talking about, but man, this is, this is a technical science here. So, um, just, just, you know, putting a pin in that for the future. Um, I want to make sure that our residents understand, you know, our goals, and I think comparing to other communities and comparing to our past and what we hope to do in the future is really helpful too, especially with the visuals. I really like slide nine, so more of that, please. Okay, um, I think that's it for this presentation, and, um, we've got a whole agenda still, so we, we really probably need to wrap this portion up. Um, it sounds like we do have a certificate, so I'll come over and grab that. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Uh, thank you for taking the time. I look forward to seeing you in person here sometime real soon. You guys take care and have a blessed holiday and have safe, uh, safe, uh, enjoy it with your families.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. All right, so we are moving on to our consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote? Nope, it will not. No roll call vote. Okay, so, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, motion to accept the consent agenda as modified.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven-zero. Up next, we have new business item number four, this opioid settlement, hang tight, National Opioids Settlement. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. After years of negotiations, two proposed nationwide settlement agreements, the settlements, have been reached that would resolve all opioid litigation brought by states and local political subdivisions against the three largest pharmaceutical distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen distributors, and one manufacturer, Johnson Pharmaceuticals Inc. and its parent company, Johnson &amp; Johnson, collectively Johnson. The proposed settlements require the distributors and Johnson to pay billions of dollars to abate the opioid epidemic. Specifically, the settlements require the distributors to pay up to $21 billion over eighteen years, and Johnson to pay up to $5 billion over no more than nine years, for a total of $26 billion, the settlement amount. Of the settlement amount, approximately 22.7 billion is earmarked for use by participating states and subdivisions to remediate and abate the impacts of the opioid crisis. The settlements also contain injunctive relief provisions governing the opioid marketing, sale, and distribution practices at the heart of the states and subdivisions lawsuits, and further require the distributors to implement additional safeguards to prevent diversion of prescription opioids. Each of the proposed settlements has two key participation steps. First, each state decides whether to participate in the settlements. Michigan has joined both settlements. Second, the subdivisions within each participating state must then decide whether to participate in the settlements. Generally, the more subdivisions that participate, the greater the amount of funds that flow to that state and its participating subdivisions. Any subdivision that does not participate cannot directly share in any of the settlement funds, even if the subdivision's state is settling and other participating subdivisions are sharing in settlement funds. In order to participate in the settlements, a municipality must opt in by January second, two thousand twenty-two. Fiscal effect, funds will be allocated by the state of Michigan, and the allocation will depend on the determined impact of opioids on the community. Recommendation, authorize the city of Marquette to opt in to the National Opioids Settlement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I move that we authorize the city of Marquette to opt in to the National Opioid Settlement.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hill?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Bonzel, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is incredibly important. Um, clearly, the national opioid crisis has impacted our community, um, and nationwide, um, in two thousand sixteen, uh, opioid overdose deaths, uh, annually were forty-two thousand. Uh, that's risen to over seventy-five thousand this year, so only five years later. Uh, opioid deaths for the last three years have exceeded deaths from car crashes as a cause of death in the United States. And the reality is, this was largely a manufactured epidemic. These companies are certainly not the only people, the only entities, I should say, responsible for the opioid crisis that our country and the UP and our community are facing, but they are, they are partially responsible and they need to be held to account. And although I, I think this settlement clearly can't, as much as, you know, $26 billion is an unimaginable amount of money, the cost of this epidemic has been far more unimaginable. Um, I think it's critically important for our community, um, and frankly, just for justice, that we're opting into this and participating in this. Um, and I think it's critically important that we don't allow, uh, this kind of fraud to be perpetrated against people in our community and our country ever again.
And any other, or Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
Um, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Bonzel's thoughtful remarks about this very important issue. We are, uh, um, in, in this, this, this crisis i- is tied to, um, also our economy, our housing situation, and other parts of just, just our quality of life here. And I really, uh, hope that, um, we are able to, uh, use these, these funds when they come in order to really help the people who have been most impacted. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the commission? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven-zero. On to item number five, Climate Action Resolution. This will require a roll call vote. Hold on here. City Clerk, could you please read the resolution for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas in April two thousand sixteen, world leaders from one hundred and seventy-five countries, including the United States, recognize the threat of climate change and the urgent need to combat it by signing the Paris Agreement, agreeing to pursue efforts to limit the global temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And whereas, a transition to a clean energy economy, if not carefully planned, would have disruptive impacts on the livelihoods of many in our community, while a well-planned transition may provide expanded job opportunities for local residents. And, whereas, Lake Superior's surface temperature has risen three degrees Celsius in the past four decades, three times faster than the global freshwater average, resulting in seventy-nine percent decreased ice coverage and therefore less protection from recent powerful storms, which have damaged Marquette infrastructure, caused private property damage, increased the cost of living for residents, and raised public infrastructure maintenance costs. And whereas, the city has adopted a climate adaptation plan as an appendix to the Community Master Plan to identify and prioritize climate concerns. And whereas, the city has undertaken significant efforts to increase energy efficiency and reduce carbon impact through the Johnson Controls International, JCI, Energy Optimization Project, and has already reduced carbon output thirty-six percent annually from eight thousand seventy-three to five thousand one hundred and seventy-six metric tons of CO2 as a result of the project. And, whereas, coal-fired electricity generation accounted for forty percent of global CO2 emissions in two thousand twenty, and the Marquette Board of Light and Power decommissioned the coal-fired Shira Steam Plant in two thousand eighteen, and We Energies decommissioned the coal-fired Prescottile Power Plant in two thousand nineteen, significantly reducing the carbon output within the city of Marquette. And whereas, the MBLP replaced the Shira Steam Plant with the Marquette Energy Center, consisting of three efficient seventeen-megawatt Wartzela reciprocating internal combustion natural gas engines that adhere to the Tier Two NOX emission standards as set by the International Maritime Organization, a United Nations agency. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Marquette declares the climate emergency threatens our city, region, state, nation, humanity, and the natural world. And that the city of Marquette commits to a citywide effort to eliminate the city's greenhouse gas emissions by two thousand fifty, and to implement additional projects to decrease carbon levels in the atmosphere, and that the city of Marquette, through its ongoing partnership with JCI, will continue to seek energy-saving programs and measures that reduce energy usage and resulting carbon emissions, and that the upcoming master plan process will include an update to the current climate adaptation plan, and that the city of Marquette will begin work on a climate action work plan that identifies targeted strategies for decreasing greenhouse gas emissions, climate mitigation, and for becoming more resilient in preparation for a changing climate, climate adaptation, for both city government operations and in the wider community. And that the city of Marquette will seek available state, federal, philanthropic, and private funding for the above efforts. And that the city of Marquette calls upon the residents and businesses within the city, the state of Michigan, the US Congress, the President of the United States, and all governments and people worldwide to join us and declare a climate emergency, initiate a climate mobilization to reverse global warming and the ecological crisis, and provide maximum protection for all people and species of the world. Dated this twenty, twentieth day of December, two thousand twenty-one, and signed Jennifer A. Smith, Mayor of Marquette.
Thank you, City Clerk. Well done.
Truly.
That was a long one. All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion on the Climate Action Resolution? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you very much. It is my honor to ask that we move, uh, in support of this climate resolution.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I will second that wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Hill, discussion?
Uh, I want to thank the community partners and community members who have been working for years, months, days, hours, on this ish, very important issue that is going to, um, lead to the, to know that we have the opportunity to really make a difference, and everything that we do here will add up and help contribute to making, uh, making sure that our planet is a livable one into the future. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioner Hanley?
I would just like to say that I am also very thankful for all of you that came here and pushed us. It is something that we obviously wanted to do, but having that little push from constituents regularly reminding us that we need to be held accountable to make sure that we're protecting the area that we live in, definitely is something that we absolutely love and ha, we enjoy having you here, and we hope you keep coming even after this meeting so we can work together to find ways to reduce this and meet our goal as we go forward. But that's all I have to say.
And anyone else for discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank everybody and our city staff who made this possible, and, and also thank the many members of the community who showed up tonight and at previous meetings, uh, to, you know, and, and contacted us as well. I received many phone calls and emails on this topic. It's critically important. Um, climate change really is, uh, it is a global issue, um, but, you know, it happened, it happens to real people in real places like Marquette. It is a global issue, but it happens to real people in real places like Marquette, and it has a real impact on the city budget, on the people living in the City of Marquette, and will continue to do so moving forward. So we need to do everything we can to adapt, but also to reduce the severity of climate change. I was really happy to see a commitment on getting to zero carbon emissions by 2050 in this resolution. It's in line with the state goals, I believe, that have been established by the governor. And I think that it's also important for us to remember, like, we're just at the very beginning of this process. We've made a lot of progress already, and we need to communicate that to the public, because I think a lot of people don't realize how much we've already done on reducing emissions and trying to adapt in preparation for climate change. But, you know, we're just at the very start. I think, thinking about housing, I feel like we're kind of at a similar point to, like, where we were on climate change action, to where we were at with housing in, like, January of 2020, when we established the Housing Committee. That's kind of where we're at right now, and there's a lot of work ahead of us, and we're going to need everybody in the community to help us out with it. So I'm excited to see what comes of the Climate Action Work Group and the kind of plan they're able to propose.
Any other comments? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, there's... I think there's two stories here. And story number one is what we've done tonight with the proclamation. I think that is a very nice summary, and really spells out the action that we need to take, the steps we need to have to go forward. But the other story that this one only partially relates to, and same thing with JCI, is all of the work that the city has done in the past generations. This has not been an idle community that's been sitting here with its head in the sand waiting for the world to somehow do things about what we should be doing. We've been doing this for a long time, and we've been very successful at it. And I think that by taking the steps we've taken tonight, hopefully, we put the message out to people of what we have done and what we have yet to do, but understanding that this is not new for the city. This is something that we are comfortable in moving forward on. We are a progressive community. We understand, I think, how to be successful in doing it. So I think that's a unique combination of what we've done tonight, and certainly with JCI, that kind of puts the caper on it of a different way of proceeding forward. Thank you, your honor.
Any other commissioners? Discussion?
I just wanted to add that I think the resolution that we have here really demonstrates that we're taking climate change very seriously here at the City of Marquette, and that we have been for years. I think that was demonstrated by the presentation that we had tonight. It worked out that that timing was kind of perfect for doing this as well. But also, you know, using that 2050 goal date is making sure that we're able to do it while being financially responsible. As a lot of folks know, you know, we've got a budget that we were $4 million in the hole this year, and we're trying to figure that out for the future, so it's difficult for us to take on really ambitious goals right now. But I think 2050 is certainly attainable. And, you know, I just did some quick math, and my daughters, who are one and five years old, will be 29 and 35, or 30 and... I'm sorry, 30 and 35 at that point in time. So they'll be my age when 2050 hits, and I'm hoping that that's a different world for them in a lot of ways, and that we can set this up now, work towards those goals, and I'm sure we'll have other goals we're working on in the meantime that we don't even know about yet, right? But I'm just seeing a lot of hope for the future with this resolution, and I appreciate those who've brought the opportunity to us to kind of renew our promise to the community on climate change, because I think it's important to kind of reflect on what we've done and what we hope to do, and this was a really nice opportunity to do that. So thank you. All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. I think you all have a good feel for how this is probably going to go, but we have to officially do it. City clerk?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. All right, on to our last new business item of the evening and of 2021, our Local Development Agreement, MDM Hemlock LLC. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Commission sold parcel 12 of the Hartwood Forest land in late 2018 to Veridia Group as part of a land sale process intended to sell surplus property and foster economic development. In the interest of developing middle-income housing in Marquette, Veridia has consulted with InovaLab Development Group and created a venture, MDM Hemlock LLC, to develop such housing on the site. In order to facilitate the cost structure needed to provide a middle-income project, they initially had discussed the option of utilizing an ACT 381 brownfield plan to provide reimbursement for the eligible costs. The Community Development Director presented the idea of a local development agreement, similar to the previous one done for the Harbor Vista Development, as a means to direct the tax capture to the city to cover what would be eligible costs in a brownfield plan, thus reducing the loss of tax capture. The result is the draft Local Development Agreement being presented here, wherein the city would be responsible for the upfront costs of the mutually agreeable infrastructure items found in Exhibit B of the agreement, at a cost to the city of an estimated $1.8 million. In return, MDM Hemlock LLC agrees to a three-phase development of middle-income housing with an initial investment of $5 million. The city return on investment for supporting the infrastructure upfront is approximately 10 years. In addition, the completion of this project will permit the city to complete the infrastructure preparation needed to facilitate the future extension of utilities needed at the Marquette Ski Hill. Fiscal effect: This project was not included in the fiscal year 2022 budget. However, with the pending removal of the College Avenue reconstruction from the 2022 Capital Improvement Plan due to the potential construction at the former hospital site, there will be an equivalent amount of funds available. This will require a budget adjustment. Recommendation: Approve the Local Development Agreement as presented. Direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, and amend the budget and capital improvement plan to reflect the inclusion of this project in fiscal year 2022. Alternatives: As determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to suspend the rules for discussion.
Okay, and do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes 6 to 1. Commissioners, have Pro Tem Mayor started us off since he made the motion to suspend the rules?
Thank you, your honor. Are we able to ask the developer questions?
Certainly, yeah. We could have the developer maybe come over to the side podium here for some questions from the commission, if that's all right with you?
I couldn't hear her.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
So I do have, I think, one main question. And, you know, over the past week since our work session, obviously, I've been thinking about this more, going over our notes and interacting with constituents as they reach out about this. And one main theme that I kept getting a question of was, what is the public necessarily getting out of the $2 million that we're investing? You know, why... What is it that it's actually accomplishing? You know, what's the difference between it being in the project or you going it alone kind of thing? If you could maybe explain that a little bit?
Could you... I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of what you said. What is the difference between...
So essentially, what I'm asking is, you know, what is the difference for this project between the city paying for the $2 million worth of infrastructure or not? You know, what is the public necessarily getting out of that investment?
Well, that's a fair question. I would... I think it's multifaceted, and number one is that, first of all, the city is making an investment in infrastructure and assets that it will own, and that it will receive all the revenues on. So we're not benefiting directly in any way from this infrastructure that's being built. In fact, I think there's some ancillary benefits to the city, as I understand it from conversations with city staff, that will extend these... Some of the utility systems further to the south that will facilitate future development in that area. So looking at it strictly from the city's standpoint, there's a positive return on the city's investment. We're only asking the city to pay for the assets that it would own, not to pay for anything that we will be owning or that we will be selling. The benefit to the community, I think, is also multifaceted, and a lot of it is indirect. I can't sit up here and tally up for the commissioners, you know, the exact impact, but, you know, we spoke in the work session about the fact that there's almost 1,000 unfilled jobs in Marquette right now. A lot of the challenge for employers in filling jobs is, especially when you're trying to bring people in from outside the community, is housing. They want the job, but they can't find the housing. The price segment that we're talking about, as of last week, I didn't update the numbers, I haven't seen updated numbers, but there was two houses for sale in the entire city in that price range. So the benefits to the city are that we're going to increase the housing inventory, we're going to increase the housing inventory, and a segment of the market that there's woefully lacking inventory. Some of those home buyers hopefully will be existing homeowners here in the community that will then put those homes on the market. Over 40%, or I think it's right around 40% of Marquette's homes are... What was that? They're old. I'll just say they're... I'm just going to say they're old, okay?
Three more to.
The point being is that if you look at the housing stock, someone that is in an entry level, a sub-250, $300,000 home, there's no... They can't sell and move up to another house right now. There's no house for sale for them to move up into. And a lot of those folks also are empty nesters. It's not just young families. It's downsizing and upsizing, you know? They want to... So we do think that it's going to free up some of the existing housing inventory as well. I can't promise you how much that's going to be, though. What it also does is it accelerates the development of this property. Without this... Well, frankly, without this support, we won't do this type of development. We'll look at other alternatives that... And this isn't a threat, this is just factual. There's a much higher return on investment for us. We want to do this because frankly, we think it's good, you know, it's good for the community. And we feel, you know, as someone who's been in this community now for close, you know, 30-plus years, we've done a lot of development in the community, the community's been very good to us, we're fortunate to have been as successful as we've been, that this is an opportunity for us to accept a lower return than we normally would, but in return, we'll be able to put 60 to 70 housing units out there on the market that we think are going to be quality housing units, and that will hopefully help reverse the trend. I'll stop there.
Thank you, and I do have another question for you. Last week, you were saying about 10% of the units, six to seven of them, were going to be around 279,000. Do you have a rough idea of what some of the other units could be comparable at? I know you gave us a max cap of like 400,000, but is there a certain... You know, are they spread out across that gap, or is it more so all of them are going to be at the four minus those six or seven?
The challenge in answering that question, Commissioner Meyer, is we don't know what's going to happen to material and labor costs. And, you know, when I was here last week, I mentioned lumber prices up 75%. They're now up 100%. That's why I'm a little bit hesitant to nail down really hard figures, because also what's going to affect that is the final design that we end up choosing. We haven't nailed down our final design yet. And the other thing that affects that is, you know, size of units, one-car garage, two-car garage, we're going to give our home buyers, you know, a menu of options. So, you know, if you choose all the upgrades, I mean, you could... They could be north of $400,000. Our average price isn't going to be that. It's going to be... It's not going to be 279. 279, frankly, is a money loser. We're going to lose money. If we build them today, we're going to lose money on the 279s. But, you know, I think the average price is going to be in the low 300s to mid to upper 300, somewhere in there.
And I guess one more question is, you know, it sounds like the buyer's going to be able to have the option of how much this could cost by what they're going to want to design it as. How exactly are you going to go about, like, how does someone get picked to be able to do that? I mean, if you have 100 people that want to purchase one of these units, how do you pick the 60 or 70?
Well, we follow the, you know, we follow the fair housing laws, first of all. So it's basically first come, first served. We put these on the market, and if someone, you know, someone makes an offer, and we accept the offer, or we work with them to get to, you know, a signed contract, that's how we would do it. And we treat everybody, you know, effectively, we have to, by law, treat everybody the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
All right, I have quite a few here. So starting with this, I look at the development agreement you came to after our work session, after everyone on this commission asked for many different things, and I see exactly zero of those things in your development agreement. There's not a hint at deed restrictions, there's nothing that guarantees that Marquette will get any buys. Most buyers that I've been noticing with realtors in the area are from out of town buying sight and scene in properties because they want to live here, which is great, but if they're putting in bids higher, you're going to take them due to fair housing. So we don't know that it will open up anything in Marquette. You have not guaranteed that any of these prices will stay below $300,000. You've made it clear that if building costs are higher, you will also have to raise the price, which is understandable. You've made it clear that you're not in affordable housing. And the way I look at it is, if you're not for affordable housing in the city, and you're not doing these things, I don't see why we should subsidize you to do the $1.8 million. And I get that it's our infrastructure, but it's giving you that discount so you can take it off the cost of the house, understandable, but at that rate, why not just let... If you're not doing affordable housing, why not just let you build McMansions out there that'll increase our tax base anyway, and you could pay for the cost of the infrastructure at that point? What is the actual benefit to the city? You've done nothing to show me that it's helpful to our residents besides that it's going to put a couple more houses up, which you would use your land, you're going to build something there.
Well, I respect your opinion, but I respectfully think we have a very different view on this. When we came here last week, I made it explicit, I said right from, I think, the first minute up here, this is not an affordable housing project, and it's not what we do. And from the very first time, we had conversations with city staff, we made that clear. Now, as far as the agreement, I didn't write the agreement. The agreement was written by the city's attorneys, okay? As I represented last week, we're more than willing to put in a clause with respect to things about, you know, short-term rentals and that. I can't put in, I am legally, I will be breaking the law if I put something in that shows favoritism to someone based on their zip code of where they live and where that buyer is. I'm sorry, I can't do that.
Is there a reason that there is not a restriction for the short-term rental in this agreement, then?
I think it was just... I think it was just an oversight. It wasn't... It certainly wasn't intentional on our part, because we're... I didn't make it clear last week, but that was our intention before we came here last week. This is a condominium association, and as such, it'll have a homeowners agreement, homeowners' association, excuse me, and that homeowners' association would be governed by some bylaws. And we've already started drafting those bylaws, and one of the things in those bylaws is a limitation on short-term rentals, so...
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse? No? Couldn't tell? Thought you raised your hand, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, I really didn't, but I would certainly want to thank Mr. Mahady for coming up and trying to address some of these concerns with the commission. Thank you.
Mr. Bonzel? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'll try and be quick. I just have a couple of questions. Some of the... A couple of questions I wanted to ask have already been asked and answered, but I had a question about... We're talking about public benefits. I thought it was really cool that you included, you know, the 10 acres of conservation with maybe some trails for residents in the plan for this development. You're talking about a playground, a sledding hill. My question would be, you know, are these recreational assets going to be available for public use? Like, say if folks from Granite Point or Shira Hills or some of the mobile home parks in the area want to bring their kids to play there or go sledding there after a snowstorm, would that be acceptable, or would these recreational facilities be intended for the use of residents of that neighborhood only?
The mountain biking trail, which will be for the public, the sledding hill, I guess our thought all along was that would be for residents. I mean, but at the same time, I mean, that'll be governed by the homeowners' association because it'll be part of the common areas of govern, you know, that are under the purview... part of the common areas of govern, you know, that are under the purview of all, of the condo owners, the homeowners.
Okay, so that'll be determined by the HOA or the condo association at that time?
Yeah.
All right. And then, the only, the other question that I had on my list here, this is more, less for you, Mr. Mahaney, more for city staff. I know that we mentioned that, well, we were already planning on doing the College Avenue replacement, but my understanding is that we actually were probably planning on not doing that this year anyway. So, I guess, is that accurate? And, I mean, how does the, this, you know, proposed up to two million dollars in bonds impact our fiscal twenty-two budget?
So, I think that when we talked about the capital improvement plan, College Ave would be the first one to go if we were unable to afford everything. At one point, we were looking to possibly scale down, you know, what we are looking to bond for upon further review of some, a project like this, where we would be inputting infrastructure in, which is something we would see a return on through water and water rates, as well as now we have property taxes that would also be added on to that. It looks like a more favorable project when we do a cost-benefit type analysis internally. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Can I hop in on that one just real quick, Commissioner Banzel?
Yeah, of course, Madam Mayor.
We included the College Avenue in the budget. At that point in time, the Duke LifePoint project, that old hospital was not public, and once that became public, we reevaluated our options, because it's, it would be pretty tough to tear up that road, knowing that we full well might have to tear it up again in a couple of years. So, it kind of gave us an opportunity to look at that funding for maybe this kind of a purpose. That's how I view that, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and I was under the same understanding about, you know, why we were, we were planning on not doing it, but I guess I was under the impression that more likely than not, we probably weren't going to end up doing it regardless, given that it's the first on the chopping block, and it's a very tight budget year. But, anyway, I do appreciate, you know, Mr. Mahaney, you providing, you know, getting up here and providing additional information. You know, I share some of the concerns that a couple of my colleagues have expressed, and I guess, maybe I'll say more on that later, or after this meeting, but I'll allow, you know, anybody else that wants to ask questions to do so.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, thank you. I want to just start by saying that I am going to be supporting this agreement. I really appreciate that we are going to have an increase in the housing inventory, and that you're looking towards attracting families, and I will also say that some people who have finished their careers and are looking to downsize will still be very much attracted to that area. They will be using the biking, and they certainly will be using the sledding hill, at least I think so. I think, and again, I think it's important to point out that these are city utilities that will be helpful in the development of other parts of that area and out into the ski hill. I do have, and I do appreciate that your consideration for putting restrictions on short-term rentals into the homeowner's agreement, and I'm looking forward to that happening. I do have a question, I think is for the city staff and maybe for Dennis, and that is, I am not sure where we are running the utilities from. Are they coming from the area where the trailer park is? You know, just...
The utilities are currently on McClellan, and they do run past the property. And the extension that we will be doing will basically come from a portion of McClellan onto the property. And in doing that, I really wish Mick was here, because he could explain it a lot better than I could, but we're putting some redundancy into the system to keep the appropriate amount of pressure that we have currently there, because that's like the southern end of our pressure district. And by designing that appropriately, we'll still be able to maintain enough pressure to be able to upsize and extend to the ski hill later on, because that right now is, it's been described to me as like a garden hose. So, it's really related to pressure, is what it is, as I understand it.
So, the utilities already go down McClellan, but we will be putting in redundancies and increasing the pressure? Yep.
That's as I understand it, maintaining the pressure, rather than just dead-ending and putting in there, it could lower your pressure, which could be disadvantageous later on.
Okay. And so, it's mostly from McClellan, not from the Division Street there that the utilities will be run?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Any other comments from the commission? I'm trying to think who made the motion. Was it you? I'll go to Commissioner Hill first, and then we can circle back to additional comments.
Yeah, so while we have this up, I'm also, where would the electric be coming from?
That is something that they're working, I do believe, with BLP?
Yeah, that's, I don't have an answer to that at this time.
Because, yeah, as I was reflecting back on this from last week's conversation to now, just starting to think through some of these details, so, and that's both water and sewer, right? So, it'd be, or is there another line that, I mean, just sort of a straight shot to the wastewater treatment plant down Division, kind of, sort of. So, how, how does that work? Is it, can anyone speak to that right now?
So, can you please repeat the question?
So, the sewer, where does the sewer, is, are the sewer and the water always?
Yeah, water and sewer are currently on McClellan.
Parallel.
That's correct.
And so, how is this, but the sewer needs to go to the wastewater treatment plant? Is it going to go all the way back uphill and back down again?
No, that, that, that system is self-maintaining, so the sewer will come from that development down to McClellan, and then back looped around to the wastewater treatment plant. It won't go across country. It'll go into the existing system.
So, it doesn't have any of the pressure problems that the water has?
No.
Okay.
No, the water issue is that we have our, our water tank for that district, and it escapes me the name of it, because I don't deal with it directly, but because of the water tank and that elevation, you only have so much pressure that goes to a certain point. And we're starting to get at the very end of that pressure district, so everything that we do in here, we have to create some redundancy in the system to maintain that pressure. Otherwise, we could end up having to try and get a bigger water tank, or more pressure pumps and things, which get more expensive later on.
And in terms of the other proposed development with, I think now Longyear, is, is that going to be tied into this as well, and is that something we should also be thinking about? That's going to be coming in a year or two, or?
That's, that's part of the plan. We're currently working with engineers from both of those projects.
And so, would, would that project coming online do anything, would there be any economies of scale of trying to do this all at once?
I don't believe the project on the west side is going to be anywhere near the timing of this project. It's probably two years behind it.
Okay. And, and then, so, and then in terms of getting water to the NTN Trailhead, Rippling River, and the mountain, are there any economies of scale of starting that now as well? I just don't want to miss out on any of those opportunities while we're there. Thinking particularly of the NTN Trailhead, which has nothing there now.
Yep.
Could, could there be in this process, getting that water, just at least to that point at this time? If it's our investment and the city investment making that happen, and we're going to have revenue to support it?
The, about the only economy of scale and savings you would see on that would likely be mobilization, but we could most certainly, and we have been, we have, I know the city manager has talked to the owner of the ski hill, and I've talked to the owner of the campground about the possibility of that happening in the future.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking specifically of the Trailhead, which, which I think has the highest need. There's, you know, there's days when there's sixty, seventy people in there, and there's, you know, two porta-potties, and it would be nice to have, it would be nice to have the water over there. Back to the question, so I'm not really familiar with a condo association as a governing unit. That's not something I've, have any familiarity with. And so, it, it, it sounds like it, they, I wonder how many other ones we have in the city, as a question, and if you don't know that right now, but I would be curious to know after the meeting.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Actually, we have probably four or five condominium subdivisions in the city, and all they are is, is the way that you record them. A lot of our older subdivisions are platted subdivisions, which is a different process. The condominium subdivision process is much cleaner, quicker, and it's the new way that's preferred, preferred by most developers. And also with that condominium subdivision process, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city commission, which, which also includes the master deed. So, some of the things that you are asking of the developer now that he is agreeing to could be addressed at that time.
So, you're saying there's a way in which we could adjust the master deed for this development to include some of these concerns that we have raised? I think that's what you just said.
The, the ones that don't violate the Fair Housing Act.
Right, fair, fair. They're not asking you to do that in any way, no, of course not, thank you.
Well, I had to be careful on how to answer. I don't want to give you just a yes, and then, and then we're back to that debate.
Yeah, fair enough. Because I do, I just, I don't know anything about this. So, because, but I do hear that there are restrictions that can be done even to access on public streets, which concerns me, and, and it, or I guess that's not a street, if, you know, but recreation facilities would be limited. And, so that, so, we would, who would be doing the snow plowing? Let me just get, cut to brass tacks here. Who plows the streets? Us or the condo association?
They're public streets, ma'am.
Okay. So, I'm just, you know, again, we're, we're proposing to put public dollars into a private development in order to try to make it more attainable, I hear, and that has been the understanding for this development from the beginning. And, so I want to, in, in this conversation about how the city grows, and we're taking on additional costs as well as additional revenue, and now we're going to be sending plows out to two cul-de-sacs out on the edge of town, and which, you know, so, as well as having to build redundancy into our water system, there are going to be costs associated with this. And in doing a development on the edge of town, instead of on infill, those costs are actually maybe even going to be higher than they are the money that we're going to get back. And certainly, that's the case in the short term. But, we very much need housing at the same time. I feel like that's the question that's being asked of us today. And I just want to be crystal clear about that, as we are wrestling with a development agreement that, right, is, is pretty general, and it, and it didn't necessarily reflect some of the things we talked about. So, what would be the process of getting some of these things into a master deed?
So, I'm glad that Dennis is here. I do believe that this, this is something that goes through the process, and actually, I was jotting down the notes on how the process that is dictated by the LDC specifically speaks of, of these condo developments. Now, going back, I don't know if this is appropriate time to talk about this too, but going back to your maintenance costs and things like that, I mean, you're talking about adding on local streets, which also affects our Act 51 funds that we would be receiving for local streets, and that is to cover the maintenance costs of those streets. Also, your water and sewer rates, which are developed based off of the cost to maintain and operate those systems, will be tied into water rates, you know, as, as they do now. So, that will cover the maintenance costs of that system as well. So, when we talk about covering those costs that we are putting into public infrastructure and those long-term costs, they will be covered. But going back to your, your question about the master deeds, those, those happen when they go in front of the planning commission, and then into the city commission for those, that zoning process. Did I get that right, Dennis? Thank you. I'm making sure that he has nothing else to add.
So, we would see a copy of the master deed and have a chance to comment on it and potentially shape what that says going forward, or is that happened at the planning, again, this is new to me?
Dennis, do you know the specific documents that are brought before the planning commission and also the city commission?
I got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, the condominium subdivision approval process involves the planning commission and the city commission, and it is a requirement of the condominium subdivision approval process that the master deed is prepared and presented. And there have been instances in the past where planning commissions have made recommendations to city commissions regarding certain things in those condominium master deeds. But again, I can't stress important enough that it's, there's going to be, need to be some legal involvement here, because you're now dealing with, like, Mr. Mahaney had mentioned the fair housing stuff. You know, things along the lines of no Airbnbs is probably fair game and something like that.
Yeah, so that's really helpful to just really get that clarity on the process and the costs. And, so, thank you for making all of this clear, because we're certainly hearing from the public of concerns about, you know, what kind of development are we fostering in this community, and that all of our residents who want to be here have a chance to actually live here, and that's, I think, what we're trying to get to. And I appreciate that you are trying to bring in as many folks as you can on that parcel, but I'm just kicking all the tires here before I, before I put my name on the, on the loan. So, thank you for your time. I think I have covered, oh, I did ask at the last, at the work session, if the manufacturing facility that's going to manufacture the homes is a union, or did you have a chance to find out the answer to that question?
Yes, we did. The Strattonville, Pennsylvania plant where most of these units will come from is non-union. They pay a twenty-eight dollar an hour wage, and I think the, I suspect the question is, will there be union labor involved? There certainly will be the opportunity for any and all union labor to, you know, participate, just as there is on all of our jobs.
Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners?
I have one quick...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Davis, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have one quick question for Mr. Mahaney. Our agreement talks about the timeline for Phase One. I'm wondering if you could give us some sense of the timeline for the entire project. And, no commitment there, but...
Right. The timeline for the entire project, I think, is going to depend mostly on demand. I mean, the nice thing about the investment that we've asked the city to make is that once, once that infrastructure is, then we can just keep rolling. We're not waiting for infrastructure to catch up. Like, you know, a lot, if this was our development, you know, we were paying for this, we would, there would be, it'd probably be a four-plus-year timeframe. I would expect it under this scenario with all the infrastructure, and we can just keep going, you know, ordering the units, placing them on the foundation, selling them. And, so I would think, I don't think it's crazy to say that this could be completed by the end of twenty-three, two years.
Commissioner Portem, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this first question's going to probably be for staff, and thank you for answering already probably a dozen questions from us. The ten-year return on investment or approximate, is that from the property taxes or from the utilities themselves?
That would be looking closer to the property taxes.
Okay.
Is how we would, we'd go ahead and assess that.
That's what I figured. And is that based off the five-million-dollar investment, or is that based off the nineteen-million-dollar investment? Because our development agreement only states five million for investment.
The five million is the minimum amount of the investment that they're guaranteed. And that, the return on investment was based off of something much larger than that, I believe.
Probably the nineteen million?
Closer to the nineteen million, yes. When you took the, you know, lower end of the price, price points and projected it out for, you know, growth. for, you know, growth, 2%, things like that for property taxes. So that's what extends it out to 10 years. If we have faster return, it would be because of a higher price point.
Okay. Thank you. I think that covered the last two questions I had.
Mr. Stonehouse.
Thank you. Boy, I see two huge things coming out of here, coming out of the project. And one is obviously a considerable increase to housing stock in the city of Marquette. And the opportunity to use that stock is suggested for people that are moving from one house and now they're moving, they're downsizing, moving to another, which opens up the original house for somebody else to purchase or rental agreements or whatever would work best with it. That's huge in this community. If you can add that number of homes, that is a really considerable import to what we have. The other side of it that we all need to bear in mind is the taxes that will come out of that property. Once upon a time, we had a power plant that was paying $3 million a year in taxes. We Energies. We don't have it anymore. That's a hole in the city budget that you can drive three 18-wheelers through side by each. So when the, the mayor spoke this morning, or spoke a few minutes ago, rather, about, it only seems like this morning. Spoke a few minutes ago about trying to deal with a $4 million budget hole. That's real. And that's one of the big reasons for it is you've got to make up that delta. You've got to make that up. And this is an opportunity to not make all of it up, but certainly to make a significant step forward on it. And for people that, that are lately in the community, the city of Marquette, about 20 years ago, purchased a considerable amount of land, which became known as the Hartwood Forest. And we purchased it for two reasons. One was the primary purpose, not primary, one was the absolutely stellar opportunity for outdoor recreation. And NTN jumped on it and of course did many of the mountain bike trails, other groups did too. Huge world-class mountain trails out there, world-class ski trails, world-class opportunities for recreation, we all know. The other reason we purchased it was to carve certain areas out of that property that would be available for later development. And that development, one of those parcels, is the one that we're dealing with right now. And that was its original purpose from day one, once we got done dividing up the land and finding out what the best land was for what. And the other one would be the parcel that we mentioned with Longyear earlier with the three of them together. So those are critical. Those are important to this city's economic well-being and future. If we want to have the things that we have and do the things that we as a community do, we've got to have the available source of the income from taxes to do them. And this is part of that. This is a critical part of that. And we shouldn't lose, I think, uh, lose, lose focus at all on that. So I certainly would be voting yes for this, Your Honor. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I have a few thoughts. I'm going to piggyback on what Commissioner Stonehouse just said. You mentioned something about, you know, if we want the things that we have, and I'll just elaborate to say, you know, when we had our wonderful snowplow crew out, you know, a week ago Monday, when we have our, our water running and our trash picked up and our lights on, which the lights aren't a direct city service, but a lot of those essential city services, right? Police services, fire services, senior center, arts and culture, Peter Wright Public Library. To pay for all of those things, we need enough money to do that. And right now, we don't have enough money to do that and we can't keep scraping by. So we have to do some creative things to either increase our revenue by taxes or cut city services. And I don't think anyone on this commission wants to start cutting city services. So, um, we're in a hard place here and I think this is a project that has a lot of potential. And I'll just, um, add that I, I know this parcel was dedicated to be developed and I think it should be developed. It's right onto main roads. It's near a lot of things that people want to be by, the ski hill, the bike trails, the four-wheeler trails, you know, pretty close to South Beach even. I think this project does a really good job of solving some of our housing problems. It obviously doesn't solve all of them. I don't think we can expect any one project to do that. But 60 or 70 units is huge. I mean, they could just as easily have done 10 units at $500,000 a pop and not tried to help solve some of these hu- housing issues. So I appreciate the work that you've done to try to find some middle ground. I know it's not the perfect solution, but I know that you've been working hard on this. I know the infrastructure will be paid off within a very reasonable timeframe. We had success with the old Ty Rollerhoff, a similar model, which is now the Harbor Vista on US 41 across from the, the Kilm project in South Marquette. And that project is on schedule, if not ahead of schedule, to be completely paid off. And this is a similar model. So I can definitely see some potential for success. I'm hopeful that it opens up the market for other homes in the area. I can't remember what Stephanie Jones called it when she was here, either at the work session or a couple of meetings ago, but it's basically kind of that shuffle that happens. The next house may not be the one that you see the impact, but if you look two or three moves down, usually there's someone who ends up either moving into the community or, you know, maybe buying their first home or kind of making one of those moves that would not have had that opportunity otherwise because there weren't enough units on the market. I'm shocked to hear that within a week lumber has jumped that much. I was shocked to hear 75%. 100%? That's insane, but I appreciate that you guys are working through those things and I know we can't predict the future of some of those, uh, those costs, but I appreciate what you're trying to do here. So I think the housing stock is needed. I think this makes sense for the city of Marquette. I've, I think I've weighed a lot of the options. I've spoken to some folks who've been concerned about the project and we've kind of agreed to disagree. I've spoken to some neighbors in the neighborhood there and I feel very prepared to vote yes on this and I really hope to see those units popping up in a couple of years. That's where I'm at. I think it would be appropriate now for us to take a vote, but I need to check with our city attorney. Do we have to make a motion to come out of discussion?
No, you can just take a motion.
Okay.
For the ultimate.
For the item.
Yeah.
All right, commissioners, do we have a motion on item number six? This local development agreement with MDM Hemlock LLC. Commissioner Davis?
I move to approve the local development agreement as presented. Direct the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement and amend the budget and capital improvement plan to reflect the inclusion of this project in fiscal year 2022.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second the motion, Your Honor.
And this does not require a roll call vote, so we will go ahead and, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Yes, if I didn't say it? And I didn't know if I did. And then I'll pose, please say no?
No.
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 Okay, so motion passes four to three. Did I get that right? Yep, okay. All right, that's that. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. All right, we are now moving on to our second public comment session of the evening. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. You really didn't think you were going to get away with only hearing from me once tonight, did you? First of all, that was good work by you tonight. That was good work. They shut off my microphone. It was still good work. It was good work for both the presentations that were given and the questions that were asked. Commissioner Hanley, that's the first time I've ever heard anyone from Johnson Controls admit that it wasn't a wash and you were the one who said, how can it be a wash? Mayor Smith, you did a fantastic job of nailing them down on the words they used and how difficult it was to figure it out. And in terms of the housing development, I was in favor of it because I'm in favor of more housing and you got to try something. I appreciate this isn't perfect, but you got to try something. Otherwise, you're just going to swirl around in a circle with nothing. So that was good work tonight. I have a few words to say about a few people. This is my first annual congratulation award to contributors to the city of Marquette. I'd like to mention Eli Berriai, NMU scholar, who determined that there was a unique, unique species of salamander on the island. After all these people have run around the island for all these years, he figured it out. He also worked with the Superior Watershed Partnership to change the behavior of Marquette citizens when they shot the island road so these blue-spotted salamanders could migrate. So congratulations to Eli. Congratulations to diver Don Fossbender. He has now been party to 11,000 pounds of tires removed from the Lower Harbor. And he also verified the presence of the zebra mussel in the Lower Harbor, which, speaking of climate change, is an indication of temperature rising in the Lower Harbor. I'd also like to mention the work of Commissioner Sally Davis in her spare time. She is responsible for the renovation of the Hurley Field Playground. She single-handedly pulled together the Fourth of July Parade upon four weeks' notice, I think you had. And that when the people were starting to fuss about the plowing, she and her husband went out in their four-wheel drive and drove up streets that had not yet been plowed. That's a contributor to the city of Marquette. And last but not least is me. I have documented 83,915 cigarette butts that are no longer within the city of Marquette. Speaking of climate change, anything you can do to reduce the garbage that enters into the ecosystem makes it better for everyone. This was not my plan for the year, by the way. I didn't wake up and have a plan for the year. It happened. I got the support of the Superior Watershed Partnership, the city manager, the recycle people, and 83,915 cigarette butts are no longer within the city. And that's one person reaching out to a bunch of people and we got it done. So happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Ryan Stock. I live at 105 Woodbridge Avenue, actually in Marquette County. But I just wanted to come today to say that it is such an honor that you all double down on your commitment to climate action and I'm so proud to be living in Marquette County today. I'm so proud to raise my children in Marquette County, mostly Marquette City, today. And I think that your plan is ambitious. I really urge you to continue to work out the details for that climate action plan and I really hope we can be a part of it. I have a lot of students that are dying for internships and that are really brilliant, have a lot of technical knowledge. And just me, like a climate geek, I'd love to continue to support this process, but thank you so much for taking this, this very seriously. It means a lot to me and it gives me a lot of hope in a very dark time. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
So my name's Tyler Penrod. I live at 2380 West Grove Street in Marquette Township, but obviously spend a lot of time in the city. And I'd just like to, again, applaud this commission for taking climate change head on. Like Commissioner Stonehouse said, you've done a lot in the past to address and adapt to climate change in our environment. But there's plenty of work to be done. So we see this as a, a first step in a, a years-long commitment to address the threat to our community and make the most out of it, create jobs and make our environment a more livable place for myself and future generations. So thank you for taking that on and taking it seriously. We appreciate it.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city commissioners. Just a couple of thoughts. Mike Smith, Upper Peninsula Construction Council, 130 West Washington. As this project is presented, this certainly will employ folks in Pennsylvania, but it will limit the scope of local contractors doing some of this work. So I just want you to, as this project progresses, if there's any way to help consider alternatives, I do have a, an article, as some of you may know, if we're wedded to a modular construction, the hospital actually was built modular. They utilized a, um, a hangar at the base in order to build modular and then put, bring those into site. So if that's something that is an alternative, I certainly would ask you to consider it and encourage you to consider construction alternatives as opposed to employing folks from Pennsylvania. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. I actually don't have to say it every time, but I usually try to get the crowd going.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Brian Kerrigan, 800 block of High Street. I'd just like to echo some of the sentiments of the UPPCC director, Mr. Smith, in that I completely understand the challenges that this commission faces, you know, on a regular basis and the tough choices you have to make in income and revenue of the city with big holes that have been addressed. But smart growth is important. The right growth is important for all of us in this community. Value to this city comes in many forms and ways. Taxes and the money needed to run the city, but also an investment into this community in jobs, in creating local jobs, in maintaining a local workforce that can stay and live in this community, to build this community, and also things like quality of life that are impacted are all things that can bring additional value outside the realm of simply just dollars and cents taxes. So I, I appreciate what the, the commission has done, but as we move forward in projects like this, we need to be very mindful and I hope that that community will be as welcoming to people walking through, riding through and receptive and accept them like the rest of this community does on any public sidewalk or street and that there's not going to be an invisible gate because of things like a possible associations or others where they don't like certain people coming into that neighborhood that they bought and paid for. So we need to be mindful of that as a big, open, friendly, wonderful community like Marquette is. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. It brings us to comments from the commission. We will start off with Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, yeah, thank you to everybody that provided public comment and also, you know, especially to folks who touched on the climate change resolution we passed tonight. I think this is the start of some really positive proactive action from the city commission and I'm really excited about it. Also, you know, I think some of the comments that we saw, you know, towards the end there, I think are, are very on point. And, you know, perhaps we need to start looking at, you know, how do we make sure that future projects and developments are, you know, benefiting the community in different ways, you know, beyond, you know, just analyzing things based on a, you know, how much is the tax base going to grow? I, I think that, you know, those are some valid points about jobs, about, you know, what kind of public assets or community assets are being created, even if they're privately owned. And, and so maybe we need to look at some kind of, you know, framework for making sure that those community benefits are incorporated into the future developments, at least, you know, those that maybe meet certain parameters. Other communities have passed like community benefit ordinances, for example. Maybe there are other ways to do it in Marquette, but I think that might be a conversation worth having. With regards to Hemlock Park and the vote we took tonight on that, I did have some comments I was going to share. I think we ran out of time, but I'll post those online within the next day or two. But, you know, suffice to say, I think that, you know, I voted no. And I, I think that among, you know, many other things, I was concerned about the affordability. You know, we were initially presented, you know, and I'm not blaming the developer for this by any means, but, you know, initially when this was presented to the commission, you know, in, in an email back in December 9th, you know, we were told that based on initial discussions that, you know, this was going to be more of a, you know, these homes, the houses in this development would, could be sold at middle-income price point. And actually, you know, that middle-income housing language, the, you know, verbatim, you know, it's a direct quote, middle-income housing, that phrase is included in the description of the agenda item tonight. You know, we do have a few units, you know, that are below 300,000 and I think some valid points were made that that's a big gap in the market, but, you know, they're 279 and there's no guarantees about that, those price points in the development agreement and there's, there are no. guarantees about those price points in the development agreement, and there are no deed restrictions presenting, you know, those homes from being resold in a year or two for much more than that. And of course, the vast majority of those homes are going to be, you know, as we heard tonight, probably somewhere in that $300,000 to $400,000 price range, which, I mean, I guess if you have a very generous definition of middle-income, you know, maybe that could be middle-income housing, but I feel like I grew up in a middle-income family, and our house is worth a lot less than that. You know, I wish the developer all the success with the project now that it's been approved. I think there are many things about it that I like. I think that the plans for, you know, the overall layout of the site look good. It seems like it'll be a nice, walkable, family-friendly neighborhood. You know, the playground, the sledding hill are cool. It would be a lot cooler if they end up being open to the public. But it's located near the NTN trails and the ski hill, and those utilities being extended to that property will yield benefits potentially for the NTN or for the ski hill. So those are good things. But, you know, the last thing I wanted to say, you know, in this meeting, and again, I'll have more detailed notes posted online, you know, on Facebook pretty soon after this meeting, but, you know, I think that we were, in some ways, you know, the way that we framed this discussion was a little bit troubling to me, that either, you know, we could vote yes on this development agreement, you know, for this specific project, to bond for $2 million, take on $2 million in city debt that all city taxpayers are responsible for, or we can cut city services. I mean, I think that's kind of a false choice. I think that there's an alternative where, you know, we could have encouraged unsubsidized redevelopment of that property, which, you know, clearly was possible. I think the developer, you know, admitted as much that without this $2 million in infrastructure funding, they'd still develop the property. That development might look quite different. But we could have, this property could have been redeveloped, and the tax base could have grown quite a lot without the city taking on an additional $2 million in debt, and a large part of our budget is devoted to debt service, which is something that I think we all need to keep in mind. So with that, I'll conclude my comments for the evening, but again, thank you to everybody that came out. We had a lot of good public comments tonight, and I think it helps us do business better when we do have that.
Commissioner Davis?
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and I, like everyone else, am hoping that our new year is when we really are able to get on top of the pandemic so that we can get our lives back together. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I would also like to say happy holidays to everyone. I would also like to encourage everyone, if you are traveling for a family event or going to see family from different areas, to get an at-home test or do a test beforehand to make sure that you're not spreading unknowingly the virus to your family and friends. The viruses are, this COVID is taking over again. Our hospitals are overrun. It is not people that are sick or unhealthy or old that are dying from this. It is young people in our area that have been dying from this. You are not immune to it. Even if you have, even if you have the vaccine, you can still pass it on without knowing. So I want to encourage people to get tested before you travel for the holidays. Thank you.
Pro Tim, Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, and I'll just add on to that, the Marquette County Health Department put out a press release today regarding the Omicron variant, which I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, that even individuals that receive both their first and second doses of the vaccine, that it's proving to have little to no effect on preventing being infected by this strain, and that individuals that received both first and the booster are at about 75% protection, and that this strain of the virus is spreading six times, it's six times more effective than Delta and 10 times more than the original strain of the virus, and that they have already detected it in our community. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail on their press release because some of it, I'm not trying to freak anybody out, but they got a lot more in depth with it. Let's go with that. Would just add that, you know, this development agreement that we had tonight, I didn't vote in favor of it, but as a commission, if a majority of us approve it, we move forward with it, and I will support it moving forward as that is how we're supposed to operate. I just, moving forward, I think, I just don't want us to lose the perspective of what is, if we're going to be including public funding into things like this, I just really want to see more of a public benefit. And I know some of my colleagues agree with that, but, and I think having more of a defined language in these agreements is really important because this is essentially our legal document for this whole thing. But anyways, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Thanks again, everybody, for being here tonight, and again, very looking forward to how we work to address, you know, truly what was an unintended consequence of our economy, you know, we, we've, our economy is based on burning fossil fuels and burning carbon, and it has brought us many, many, many benefits over the 150 years that we've been doing this. But people were living here before we had fossil fuels. We're going to figure out a way to live here when your kids are your age. It's going to look different, but, you know, we've been, some folks have been here, cultures have been here for thousands of years, so we'll figure it out, but it's, the transition is going to be, there's going to be some starts and stops. There's going to be things that worked. There's things that we're going to pick up and let go, you know. You know, I've got that eight-track player in my car, and so the technology will change, but we will. I'm excited to truly work together with the community to figure out how we're going to make that transition. Regarding the development agreements, I think that we do need to have stronger language, and whether we need a work group of the committee or something, but this, this process, I feel, is, is we don't get to vet things. We had 100 people in here just a few weeks ago because they didn't know that something was coming. I don't think our processes are working very well for our community. And I'm excited in the master plan process to bring more clarity into many of these things, but we've had too many things in front of us where it's like, well, we need to do this, things didn't get talked about, all of a sudden it's in front of us, and then there's this talk that government is slow, and yet we're here making these decisions on things on very sort of generic situations. And so I, I want to encourage the, whether that's us or staff or how that looks, but I don't think we're fully airing opportunities, you know, in an hour and a half meeting, and then we're, and then it comes here, and then we have to suspend the rules and talk for another, I don't know how long it was, and then we're making a decision. That's, that's kind of the opposite of slow in my book. So, so I would ask that maybe we find some other ways to think about how this gets done. Some, I know some things, there are processes where you have a first reading and a second reading before you vote. Do we need, should we install a process like that to give things the opportunity to have a full hearing? And that said, certainly, housing is absolutely the number-one crisis issue in this community, and it is holding everything else up, outside of COVID. And so I do wonder, I'm also, we have, we had a housing report that identified some prices and things, but the questions of how we actually implement and decide how housing is going to go forward, we're just getting started with that, and we, I don't know that we, that, I can go back and look at the recommendations again, but aside from some zoning changes, but the process changes of what happens when the developer's agreement comes to us. We had three hours of conversation, most two hours of conversation, and is that, I don't know, I'm feeling kind of unsatisfied by that myself at the moment. So, and yet, you know, yes, we have tough decisions. Yes, we don't, you know, we're not kicking the can down the road. We're making the decision and moving on. We've told one no, we've told one yes, but I really, you've heard me say that, but I also feel like this, this process can be improved. And the last thing I want to say is, there is, speaking of improving processes, there's something called Michigan Green Communities, and that is an opportunity for staff, elected officials, community members to understand what specific things can be done by governments to meet these ambitious climate goals. And I highly encourage folks to take part in this process. It's going to be happening at the state, and honestly, from everything that I've seen, taking part in that process will also likely lead to us being more likely to be funded. So if we want to get the money to do these projects, I highly, highly encourage folks to take part. Google Michigan Green Communities, and you'll get that list. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
We've had a long meeting. I have one thing to say. Merry Christmas to all. Thank you.
I have two things to say. I'm going to keep it light. We've had a lot of discussion. I feel like I've said what I needed to say for tonight. I know we'll have more discussion moving forward on a lot of these things. Oradoc Light Display, so on the actual, real, physical Oradoc in Lake Superior in the Lower Harbor, if you go on Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night for the next four weekends from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., there will be a laser light show, which is super cool. Outdoors, pretty COVID-safe, fun to bring to kids, but it's not on the side that you would naturally think, like the Lower Harbor side. It's on the other side. If you want to be over on the south side of the Oradoc and looking at that. But it'd be really fun to bring family and friends down there, and there are several opportunities. Like I said, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., Travel Marquette is putting that on, and I'm really excited to take my family down there and check that out. And my second thing is, I just want to say Merry Christmas to those who celebrate, and a Happy New Year to all. Our next meeting is on January 10th at 6:00 p.m., so we will see you at that point. Just one moment. We do have to see if our city manager has any comments, and then we will adjourn after that point.
I can't possibly top that. So I'm going to sleep.
You don't dare.
Don't dare.
Okay. We're adjourned at 8:39 p.m. Thank you.